All right, welcome, everybody. We're like starting more or less on time, so we're still within the 10 o'clock. Welcome to a special committee of the whole for all of those in the audience and staff, many, many staff and council here to have this. This is a new thing for us as a council and the staff, trying to add some depth to our consideration of both the budgeting process, but also our strategic planning process and our capital planning process. So, we are not quite where we want to be in 2019 in terms of our overall budgeting and planning process, but it's, we're trying to make incremental steps forward. And this is a chance for us to get a real sense of what capital projects are needed in our community as a council, to talk through those and help those inform our estimates meeting, so that we're in that meeting talking about the numbers, not about the projects so much themselves. I just, before we start, I do want to just acknowledge the fact that we are on the traditional territories of the coast and straight Sailors people, specifically the Lakewang speaking people, known today as the Songhees and Isqamawat First Nations, that their ties to these territories continues to this day, and also that these proceedings, I believe, are still being live cast, as all of our meetings are, and will be recorded and available on podcast or webcast later. I'm not here to talk so much today, we're here to work with the staff and go through, and this is a little bit more of an informal process in the sense that we're going to be walking through slides on the screen, and then we, the general structure of this, I think everybody in the audience has found the coffee and the cookies in the hallway, but please help yourself to those. We'll be taking a break about noon, a short break, just for refreshments, and our general format is we're going to be spending about two hours going through the details, about an hour of more in-depth, and about an hour of council discussion and opportunities for the public to speak. There isn't, there's not a large component for public input today, I'll just forewarn that, we're going to get through as much of this as quickly as we can, but there will be a much more, larger chance for community input at the budget, remind me what we're calling that, the Budget Roundtable or open house, Budget Open House, where we'll be collecting more information from the public at that time. The numbers today, I just pointed out, so just orders of magnitude numbers, they're not really intended to imply a very detailed analysis or piece, it's just really to give us some sense of what those might look like. So with that, I will be happy to hand this over to Ms. Verella.
Thank you, Your Worship, so thank you to Mayor, Council, Staff, and the public for giving up four hours on their Saturday, greatly appreciated. I wanted to really highlight the purpose of today's workshop, and council actually has this on the desk in front of them, to remind ourselves if we start to delve into a discussion that would be more appropriate to the budget process. This is really about getting some depth to discussion around initiatives. So, we want to introduce the new proposed initiatives, not previously included in the five-year financial plan. With this, we hope to streamline future estimates meetings by providing information about these proposed initiatives to council in advance, and the directors are going to be introducing those projects in a roundtable format. And we want to discuss the process going forward and potential inclusion of additional initiatives. Once you see the initiatives today, you might want to discuss, hey, I had another idea, and how do we actually fold that into the process? Sometimes that happens too late, we're trying to make it segue early in this process for So, moving forward after February 23rd today, budget discussions in April will include governance decisions by council regarding final selection of the projects and determination of funding sources, so whether taxation is used, reserves, grants, borrowing, others. And that process is really going to shake out during estimates meetings, staff will have recommendations on funding sources, but really, that final decision is within the governance realm. So, strategic planning, the process to date, we've been doing this so long, we actually forgot, we had one on December 3rd, so it was great, the mayor pointed that out to me. So, December 3rd was actually our first strategic planning process, and that's where we discussed that three-pronged approach, philosophy, initiatives, and annual report. January 21st, we developed priorities and goals, linking those to the OCP and other corporate requirements, and that sheet is on the desk in front of you for ease of access. January 24th, we did a common knowledge-based session about asset management in the context of Oak Bay, and this is really part of that commitment to develop a common language and understanding between council, staff, and the public. January 29th, we talked about housing tools that council may want to consider as they tease apart the puzzle of housing in Oak Bay, and how you want to address that. And today, we're talking about new initiatives, from what we've heard informally to date from you, based on staff recommendations that could relate to operational requirements or mitigation of risk, things like that. So, what have we achieved so far? I think the one thing that we can say very clearly is that this is a more robust and public strategic planning process than what has gone before, and I think that's something for us all to be proud of. We developed those five draft strategic priorities of councils with associated corporate goals, and those included, like I said, both from the OCP and other recommendations. We agreed in principle to adopt the Oak Bay OCP vision statement as a philosophy piece of strategic planning, so when we develop your corporate strategic plan, we'll be bringing back your priorities, your vision statement, and we'll start to actually pull it together into a document, which you also haven't had before. We built a common knowledge base, as I've mentioned, about tools for housing and asset management in Oak Bay. We've achieved council consensus in principle to include a minimum 2% increase for infrastructure renewal and a 1% increase specifically for roads in the upcoming budget process. And we've developed an initiative, spelling makes mistakes, sorry about that, an initiate template sheet to foster enhanced discussion about new initiatives. And so, we're really trying to bring forward some tools to foster communication. All of this is built on these principles, really, that we're committed to building a shared knowledge base, that we're striving for continued improvement year over year and process over process, and we want to recognize that this is the long game. You know, the mayor mentioned this isn't ideal where we want to be, but it takes time on that path, and I think once you have the commitment on that path and you have demonstrated milestones, I think you're well on your way. So, let's talk a little bit about the constraints for today. So, we recognize that this is our best opportunity to link strategic planning to the in-stream 2019 budget process, and we've talked about that a lot. We want you to be aware that some of the projects really are order of magnitude until we get council decision or direction. So, for example, to do a big master plan, to do a big master plan, that's a lot of work for staff to bring those costings forward, and we're going to want direction from council before some of those research pieces are done. We also know the list of initiatives may not be exhaustive, so pending further budget development, as this moves forward, you might see, or suggest, additional initiatives. Staff might do the same. And we know the total impact to budget of the proposed initiatives are not known at this time. We've got totals for you, but you don't get to consider those in the context of budget at this time. Debbie, did you want to?
Just to add to that, so through the budget process, once we determine what initiatives, for example, will be included in the budget, we will be looking at the overall picture and coming forward with recommendations at estimates for where those would be funded from. So, for example, some will likely be funded from taxes, but we also have some reserves set aside, like the Capital Works Reserve that we could access, so we'll look at that and bring those suggestions forward at estimates.
Great, thank you. So, when we talk about constraints, I like to balance that conversation with what's on our radar for how we want to move forward. So, for 2020 budget, we want to more closely link strategic planning to development of budget and the five-year financial plan. We want to link surface levels to the budget and to the annual report with metrics. We want to develop a shared philosophy of budget between council and staff, and that's really something that will help us both frame the budget and clarify shared expectations. We want to differentiate between the core budget and one-time operating and capital projects. We want to foster adaptability and responsiveness to changing challenges and opportunities throughout the year. We want to foster enhanced opportunities for public engagement in this process. We want to automate our budget process with appropriate tools and other things as council may recommend going forward. So, what we actually want to do is workshop how you want the future budget process to look. So again, it's that idea of shared expectations, so separate days, separate workshop for 2020 Just a reminder about the council strategic priorities and corporate goals, and this is really for the benefit of the public. Council developed five draft strategic priorities, they haven't been formally endorsed at this point. Ensure access to diverse housing options within the built environment by reviewing and planning for community needs while reflecting Oak Bay's unique character. We want to achieve sustainable service delivery through an asset management program that is integrated with a long-term financial plan. We want to provide service excellence by optimizing operational effectiveness and fostering public engagement. We want to enhance and promote quality of life and sense of place by stewarding the community's history, landscape, culture, and amenities within the context of southern Vancouver Island. And we want to demonstrate leadership in fostering community health and resilience, and that's actually the cornerstone of the OCP, it's a thread that pulls all the sections together. And we want to do that by committing to economic, environmental, and social sustainability within the district's operations and decision-making. And then when you see the corporate goals below that, the ones with bullets are actually straight out of the OCP, the ones with arrows are recommendations either from council or staff, okay? So, now we want to talk by department, and I'm going to invite Andy to go into that first, because I want council to understand, his process is a little different for budget, so I thought that was worth a few minutes.
Sorry, yesterday I was told I was different, so, let's find out why. So, yeah, the police budgeting process is a little bit different, as far as the way council approaches it. Some of you may be aware already from, you know, previous budget years, but I thought I would just explain it a bit for the new folks and just put it in context. There's no doubt, it's an important aspect of the budget, I think you'll find in most communities policing is 20 to 25% of the municipal budget, so it's obviously something that can't just be put over on the side as a non-issue. So I won't get into specifics of the provisional operational budget, that's part of the estimates committee work. Today's about capital items, or should we say project or initiative-based items, which is what I believe most of the folks are going to be speaking about today. So, just the role of the Police Act and the Police Board. So, in British Columbia, the Police Board's responsibility is to establish a police, municipal police force, or police department, and to provide general direction to that department in accordance with, you know, existing legislation and the response to community needs. The province has ultimate responsibility for how policing is delivered in the province, but the municipalities are actually responsible for the delivery of that service. So, obviously provincial and municipal governments do have a vested interest in policing, but municipal police boards are created independent from municipal councils or from the provincial government, just to remove policing from any potential for partisan influences. Not that that would ever happen in Oak Bay, but that's what that's all about. So there's sort of, there's two overreaching goals of civilian governance, first is to ensure the independence of the police force or police department, and the second is to guarantee transparency, accountability, and to ensure there's public support for the police department in that community. So as far as the police budget process, the Police Act requires that the Police Board delivers a budget, provisional budget to the council by November 30th, which was done last year, of course. And the Police Board actually has the ability to make changes to that provisional budget up until March 1st, it's something that typically doesn't happen, but there is room to make some changes there, obviously with estimates typically occurring later in the year, that's where that fits in. Now, should there be, you know, an item or an expenditure that council's just not comfortable with, and the Police Board feels strongly is an important factor of the delivery of the police service, and there's an impasse, we'll say, then the province police services ultimately is the arbitrator of that, I suppose. And that's not something that you see very often, although, I shouldn't, in CRD, there has been some discussion about that of late, as many of you may know, but it's not something that Oak Bay has seen, and it is a rare occurrence, most times there can be negotiation, or whatever term you want to use. So, as far as the Oak Bay capital items, so just to put it in context, policing doesn't involve things like the maintenance of public infrastructure, roads, rec centers, that sort of thing. We don't inquire significant pieces of equipment to deliver our service, other than police cars would probably be our most expensive equipment. We don't develop income streams for the municipality, such as planning may do, and we also don't set public policies, or I should say, develop policies that, of course, council would set, such as planning and engineering and some of the other departments within the municipality. Our product really is our people and the delivery of our service and the equipment that we need and the training that we need to provide that level of service. So with that, I think you would find salary-related accounts would really do, is a large, probably the largest part of our budget, operating budget. But, we do have some capital items that you've seen already through the budget presentation that was made, and we'll get into the details of those, but this year, the largest one, it's about 184,000 is our capital ask this year. Police cars take up 108 of that, IT is always a big thing for policing, and a lot of times that's dictated by outside influences such as the province, as far as the police-related farm management and that sort of thing. And then we have some speed enforcement and then a small office organization, reorganization. So out of the 184, 179 of that would be, is proposed will come from reserves, just for context on that. So that's really my spiel. If there's any questions, we've been given about 10 minutes, so I think I've used about three, so, any comments, questions, now's a good time.
Anybody from council wanted to ask a question, or committee, sorry, Council Zalka?
Thank you very much, Chair, of course, through you to the police chief. Is it reasonable that we can set a policy that, say, if in the future we decide to align with what appears to be the provincial direction, that no more cars that burn gasoline or some sort of fossil fuels will ever be purchased again? If we set a policy like that, is that something that the police would be in a position to potentially fulfill with respect to your different budgeting process?
So just, what we'd have to explore is the capacity of non-gas engine or diesel engine type vehicles that exist today, there would have to be some decisions around costing, I think you can anticipate a greater cost associated to that. And the reality is the fuel consumption in our service in Oak Bay is relatively low compared to other departments, so that would be something I would suggest that council perhaps could present to the Police Board, perhaps through written comment or whatever format you'd want to do for that, you know, around the philosophy, or even if you're going to be bringing in sort of a mandatory thing, the Police Board would have to explore that with myself, and we can, we could respond accordingly.
Absolutely, of course, discussions required. I do see in the, in just a simple Google search, that many police boards are, across North America, are having to sort of struggle with this and respond to, no doubt, their local boards who are making similar requests. So just wanted to know fundamentally, if it was simply possible for us to at least start this discussion, and then if we just decide to insist upon something like that, whether the Police Act would, and the police budgeting process would afford it, since we are such a small district, and hopefully we don't have too many high-speed chases that we have to deal with, thank you.
Yeah, I would, yeah, fair enough.
Thank you, yeah, I think the question is really on process, not specific, yes, yeah. Council Green?
Thank you, and thanks, Chief Britton. I'm just curious about how best we can support you and the police services in Oak Bay, are there some key things that you would hope for in terms of support from council, apart from the budget, obviously, but are there other areas where you would appreciate support, and how can we do that in the best way possible? Thank you.
Yeah, obviously the budget's a big part, but we work every day with the other directors, and obviously there's some bylaws, perhaps, that would be of mutual interest to multiple departments that are sitting around the table here. So of course, anything that council could do to facilitate any bylaw or policy things that come to you with recommendations from staff would be helpful. There's not, I can't say there's anything sort of pending on the radar screen right now, but that's one area I would suggest.
Thank you, any other questions, comments, okay, thank you, oh, sorry, Council Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the information so far. Just wondering if there are any changing dynamics on a regional level that you would, you know, like to give us information on, that may find their way into Oak Bay. I know that certainly Victoria has expressed some challenges, as have Sanich and the nature of their demands on their police and some of the events that they need to respond to, and then the overall regional strategy, I guess, as far as emergency preparedness and whatnot. So just wondering if there's any comments that you have with a more regional focus?
Sure, I think two things that we will probably see in Oak Bay in the coming years is, one, is there's an increase in police standards being developed by the province. Every year, there's new standards, and with that comes a higher requirement on the police departments to meet these standards, and in some cases, there's, you know, perhaps IT that, or other practices that have to be developed that could come with costs. I think also what we're going to see in, throughout the province, but, you know, regionally, is more integrated units. I think you're going to see more of those coming in the future years to meet these standards, and also just to meet the dynamics of, you know, cybercrime is one that comes to my mind, it's really for, you know, Oak Bay, or even a department the size of Victoria to try to have the infrastructure that's required to combat cybercrime is virtually impossible. So you're going to start seeing more and more police integrations in the region, and of course, we would be required to be a partner in those, because we have to deliver that level of service, and the only way to do it is by way of an integrated team typically. So I think you're going to see in the coming years, more costing associated to being part of these teams.
Okay, thank you, and just, I'm cognizant, we have in our timelines about 10 minutes per department, and we're, we're actually, because Lou was so efficient, we're sort of on time at the moment, but we can't, we can't get too far down into the weeds on some of these things, but Council Zalka, another quick question?
Thank you very much, I much appreciate the comment about integration of services, I'm very much looking forward to opportunities in that area as a way of saving, in general saving money. So this question will be for you, and the fire department can get ready for the same question, having to do with dispatch. Unfortunately, the, what appears to be a fractured current situation in dispatch, just personal opinion, it may not be the situation on the ground, and it's unfortunately leading to a lot of folks asking me, saying, my goodness, this seems to be something in favor of just abolishing all the places and fire departments and just going with an amalgamated or consolidated approach. Not wanting that, because I really very much appreciate the local services that we have, I appreciate the service you and the fire department provide to the citizens of Oak Bay, but if there's a way, at least for either now or at an appropriate time, you could touch on the whole dispatch issue and how we could potentially find a way that fire department and police could simply get along, at least in terms of perception, thank you.
Briefly, or do you want to just, we don't have to get too, it's sort of outside of the purview of what we're talking about here.
Sure, I can just, real quick, I'll just say that the, there's a, the full police-integrated dispatch center actually is now up and running as of, within the last month, ECOM. So, I think, you know, I really can't speak on behalf of fire of where they're at, I can say that police, I think, have reached that goal of fully integrated service. Where it goes as far as other emergency services in the region, I really can't speak to that right now.
I'm sure, sure, Chief Hughes probably appreciates that as well. All right, thank you very much, Chief Britton, it's very, very much appreciated, I'll hand it back to you, Lou, to the next speaker.
Thank you. So, moving forward, and this is going to reinforce the idea that Andy's different, what I'm going to ask council to do is to make notes on your questions as the directors present, and then we've actually held the block of time, that we can do a bit of open house with the directors, but otherwise, we'll have no way to manage this time schedule moving forward, so make your notes, and then we, I promise we have a section built in for questions specifically related to the initiatives, so thank you. Next up is fire, and I just, before I hand this over to Darren, I wanted to talk a little bit about the layout of the slides that you're seeing. So, we have the proposed initiative on the left, we have the five years, that horizon, built out in columns. The priority column is linked to your strategic priority, the sheet of which you have in front of you, if you need quick reference, and the direction is, where is this idea coming from for this initiative? So some of them will be operational requirements, some of them will be OCP, some of them will be an asset management plan or other document, and what I'm going to do right now, because I don't know if everyone's eyes are as bad as mine, but I'm actually going to ask, Debbie, do you mind starting relating that to council? These are for the visually challenged amongst us, and I'm included. So, I apologize for the gallery, they're going to have to struggle through the rest of us with the slides, but I think it's important the decision-makers have those packages, and we So I apologize for the gallery. They're going to have to struggle through the rest of us with the slides, but I think it's important the decision makers have those packages and we weren't sure how many people were attending today. So again, my apologies for those in the gallery and I'll hand this over to the fire chief now.
Thank you, Lou. Good morning, Your Worship and council. First on the docket for fire department proposed new initiatives is the alteration of the fire station doorway. This would be the center doorway. When you're looking at the fire station, there's five bays and this is the center one. It's actually part of the original 1938 building. Those bays, so the three bays on your left as you're looking at the station, were part of the 1938 building and those three bays are actually lower and narrower than the bays in the 1965 section, the two bays that were added at that time. Our initiative is to provide funding to raise and increase the width of that door in order to fit a new piece of fire apparatus that is in, requires replacement. Current fire apparatus that is produced, just to give you a very quick background on the truck that is in that bay right now, it was produced in 1990, just before my time there, and they didn't require enclosed cabs for firefighters at that time. So it's still open and there's a, an open area in the rear seats for the staff to stay. So trucks since that time have become higher and wider as well and consequently apparatus currently produced will not fit in that bay. We've looked at a few different options, whether it be a portable structure around the rear of the fire station and there's many, kind of the cons column just makes it logistically very difficult and much more expensive. So we, I say ballpark, but an order of magnitude of 125,000 to raise the door, increase the width, produce a new door that would be complementary to the existing doors in the station, as well as this will involve more consultation with building and planning to maintain the visual symmetry as the building, of the building as it is on the heritage registry currently. There is a width component as well, that is a shorter bay than the other, the two far bays in the 1965 section. However, we are, the manufacturers are able to overcome the length issue with some innovative solutions to that. Second, we have the interior painting of the fire station bays and offices. We've put this forward over the past couple of years. The bays were last painted in 2004. They, it's been, yeah, 15 years for those and then the offices have kind of been painted in a patchwork, patchwork fashion over the years. Not to say they're unclean or anything, but it does, certainly does require, does require attention. The public come in for tours in through the bays and we have various groups come through as well as the offices are kind of the first impression that people get when they come into the fire station. The exterior painting of the fire station, that would include the outside areas, the fire station, the fascia, the wood, the stucco, obviously not the brick, but it would include all those areas, including the auxiliary shed that's around the back, that's a shared police-fire resource. This paint being exposed to the weather and whatnot, the substrates have actually been exposed, like the wood underneath in the areas that are wood and it is degrading at an accelerated rate just because there's not the protection, you know, the wood cracks and at some point, it does become more and more expensive each year because there's more sanding and/or replacement of those substrates. Finally, I have the replacement and consolidation of the fire and police generator. It's actually the fire police generators as they currently exist. They're, respectively, they're 35 and 44 years of age. So they are, they are at end of life. We had a study conducted by Emery Electric on the loads that are experienced day-to-day. They determined that we're at and at times would be over capacity if we were to be using, utilizing the current two generators, which, like I say, are very close to end of life. The work would also include, there's associated switching equipment as well, transfer switches. This would enable the fire and police department to have effective and reliable emergency power throughout an incident and it certainly would be more, a more efficient style of power generation just because they are, one's a diesel generator, one's a propane. They're very old technology and especially the diesel generator is, doesn't have any of the emission controls that are required on today's equipment. So we've actually had over the years some issues with fumes being drawn in to the police department through their HVAC system, but I digress. The, and it is, it is also quite a, quite a patchwork system, having the propane generator started 44 years ago supplying bits and pieces of power to police and fire and then subsequently the other generator that's 35 years of age being added. And a key part of that was ensuring that we could conduct all our operations on the fireside, especially filling our air bottles for firefighting. We required quite a bit more power and we had no way of accomplishing that before. But this would consolidate everything into one generator and it would be, like I say, it would be more efficient and it would certainly be much more reliable.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. So next up is Ray with, for Parks, Rec and Culture Initiatives. Ray actually has a couple slides, so he's got a lot of initiatives in his section, so I'll hand that over to Ray.
Thanks, Lou. Just as it's a lengthy list, I'll try and go quickly, but just some general comments before I start. The list includes larger items, so at estimates you'll see some of the smaller items that are not included here come forward for your perusal. The timing and cost estimates on some of these projects, particularly the ones that are a little bit further out, may not be, there might be flexibility on the timing. The estimates might be just order of magnitude. I'll try to identify those as we go along, as I said, rather quickly. The first one is a Wi-Fi upgrade for multiple centers, the three main rec centers, the NLC, Windsor Pavilion and the Tennis Bubbles. We have poor service there. We get daily complaints. We're actually now starting to lose some bookings in the lounge and at Monterey for groups and that are looking for that type of service and we are unable to provide it. So as you'll see, the first, the first few are all in 2019. Comfortable saying that those cost estimates are all pretty accurate. So then going to Walbourn Park railing project. For those who like to walk the trail up to Walbourn Park, there's a steep set of stairs with a safety railing that is in very poor shape. It's rusting out and some of the anchor points have actually let go in certain portions. So this is a safety concern that we're looking to address. The Sports View Lounge carpet replacement, that carpet, for those who attend any events there is, is in poor shape and is at the point where efforts to clean it are unsuccessful. And given the music events that have taken off there, there's increased activity there which adds to the problem, but also raises the profile of the poor condition of the carpet. So looking to replace that. The Windsor Park picnic shelter, there is a concrete slab, you may be aware, between the tennis court and the playground now where there used to be picnic shelter, I'm told. It was taken down prior to my arrival in Oak Bay because of its deteriorating condition. This is an item that has had a lot of discussion in general, playground, park amenities at the commission table and they'd like to see some enhancements and shelters in some of the parks as one of them. So this is an opportunity to address that expressed desire and replace something that historically has been in place and to provide shelter from rain and maybe more importantly, sun on warm days for young children that often are in that park. The Monterey lobby carpet replacement, very similar to the Sports View Lounge carpet, although I would suggest it's in worse shape. There are actually rips and tears in that carpet and so as you enter in, that doesn't provide a very professional image, I guess. And concern is if we don't address that soon, the condition will get worse and start to be a safety issue for some folks who are not quite as sure on their feet as they have been in the past. So I'd like to address that. Quail Room floor replacement, that's the quail room up at Henderson Center. The quail room has become more utilized, given the success of TRX and spin class programs at that location. The tile floors are in very rough shape and the proposal is to replace them with more of a rubber tile. That would be more in keeping with sort of the fitness-related activities that are very popular in that room. The Anderson Hill Park kiosk replacement, there is an existing kiosk there now that is starting to fall apart and contains very outdated information. This would allow for replacement of that kiosk and replacement of the information panels to provide some educational material for the public and also to support the really tremendous volunteer efforts that take place at that park in terms of invasive species removal and trying to maintain the endangered Gary Oak ecosystem there. The elimination of one-guard pool shifts, that's sort of an ongoing operational initiative that started three or four years ago. The issue there is we have a number of shifts during the day where we only have one lifeguard on shift in the pool. At those times, our reception staff are the backup in case of emergency. That leads to, you know, some, it's not an ideal situation. Obviously, if there is an emergency, reception staff are being pulled away from the front desk, which isn't the best situation and also they have to be trained twice a year to do lifts out of the pool and things like that. We have actually had staff injure themselves a couple of times. It's fairly physical training that they have to go through. And, and a few years ago when we looked into this in checking with a lot of the other aquatic facilities, certainly in the region and beyond, we found that we were one of the few that was actually, that actually had a large number of one-guard shifts. So best practices would suggest that we work to eliminate those. So this is an ongoing effort that by the end of what you see there in 2023, we would essentially have no more one-guard shifts in the pool. So thank you. The arena lounge and ISF roof at the Oak Bay Rec Center. This is one where, this stems from a 2013 roofing audit that we had done for all our departmental buildings. The, this is one where the timing and the budget may change as time goes along. For a project of that size, certainly we would do a condition assessment a year and a half or so out to find out whether the roof has worn worse or better than we thought and whether that can be pushed out a little bit. That particular roofing project, there is potential, if need be, to phase that over two or three years to lessen the impact in any one particular year from a budget perspective, but it's certainly something that will need to be done. The Oak Bay Rec Center Arena Chiller, that's part of the refrigeration plant. I'm sure you're not familiar with what a chiller is, but it's an essential piece of equipment that is encased within a shell. It's a difficult, if not impossible, piece of equipment to evaluate in terms of how much life is left in it. Not to be overly dramatic, but just to give you some sense of what can potentially happen. The Fernie, the unfortunate incident that happened in Fernie, there was a number of things that happened there that led to that. But the first thing that, the first mistake, if you want to call it that, was they failed to replace their chiller and it was very old and then started to leak and that led to another series of unfortunate circumstances. So you always have to guess, but you'd rather guess and leave a couple of years' life on the table than guess the other way and guess wrong. So that, that dollar figure is pretty good and that timing is probably right. That will also allow us to get a more energy-efficient chiller. There's new technology that would allow us to have a chiller that had, would have a much less of a pneumonia charge than our current one, which we think would be beneficial as well. The repaving the parking lot at the Oak Bay Rec Center, this comes from a recommendation of the superintendent of Public Works who's inspected the parking lot and suggested that it needs to be repaved before the condition deteriorates. Thank you for the moral support there. And before it deteriorates and we have a larger expenditure on our hands and have to dig down deeper and deal with the base. So the timing on that is probably accurate. The dollar figure is very much an estimate, order of magnitude estimate. The Oak Bay Rec Center Pool Roof Replacement, another roofing project that stems from that roofing audit I mentioned earlier. Again, we are probably going to do a condition assessment of that roof this year so that we're prepared for the 2020 budget deliberations as to whether or not that needs to come forward or can be pushed out. Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan, that one stems from the OCP recommendations. That was a long-term recommendation which were to be seven-plus years on the 2014 document, so 2021 would be seven years out. Given a lot of the things that the commission is, has been talking about and even included in their strategic planning document, I think that's a plan that staff would like to see go forward in that year or fairly close to that. The $200,000 is very much an order of magnitude guess. We haven't got a nailed-down cost estimate for that and there is a little plus sign. Those types of plans have really increased in cost over the last five to 10 years, just given the amount of public consultation that goes along with them is much more, there's much more of that than used to happen in the past. So we'll have to get, you know, probably this year, early next year, a tighter cost estimate on that one. The Urban Forest Strategy Implementation, this, these figures are taken directly out of the implementation plan that council approved last year as part of budget deliberations. So that's, there's just, those are the last four years of a five-year implementation plan that council approved. So nothing more to suggest there. Review of the Tree Protection Bylaw, that is a recommendation of the OCP. That's essentially being done in-house with no significant costs associated with that and the manager of Park Services has initiated that. He's sent out a draft revised version for staff comment and I think something will be coming to commission and then council in the near future. Special Events Policy is also a recommendation of the OCP that is essentially going to be dealt with in-house and actually I think there have been tweaks to our special event approval process and I think a large number of the suggested items to address in the OCP have actually been addressed. So, but no specific policy has been drafted, so there's still work to do there. Carnarvon Park Priority Implementation, obviously a plan and a report will be coming forward to council this spring, but without seeing that report, we have no idea what the specific projects will, you know, in terms of priority, what's to be done in what year and what cost numbers will be associated with those. But as soon as that's known, it can be brought forward as part of this process the next time around. Trail Path and Sidewalk Plan, again, a recommendation of the OCP. This is envisioned to be a joint effort between ourselves and the engineering department. This is envisioned to be a joint effort between ourselves and the engineering department. Hopefully, more effort and expertise from the engineering department than from our end. And there's been no work done from the Parks Recreation and Culture side of things, but I know engineering has, has done some. I don't know if, Dan, do you want to speak to that now?
Yeah, I can, I can just add to say that this was one of the, the items that was in the OCP and was, and used to be on the strategic priorities list several years ago, but then in the last council, as there was a, a reduction in scope to try to say what's achievable, this was one of those things that said, it needs to be done, but it needs to be deferred. So now what we're proposing here is to say, okay, we're bringing it back as something that needs to be, to be progressed. So some of the work that's happened is a bit of the options analysis stage, so the rough order of magnitude costing and, and some ideas about which areas might be potential project areas.
Thanks. Then we have a couple of commission priorities. These stem from the Commission's Strategic Priority Document that was forwarded earlier this year. And based on some advice, I believe from Mayor Murdoch, the commission did try to take their 10 initiatives and identify their top three priorities in priority order, and I think there will be an upcoming slide that shows those. But the first one, an update of dog use policies. The year and the budget amount are, certainly, the budget is guesswork at this point, just using the Carnarvon Park Master Plan as sort of a benchmark in terms of the amount of public consultation. But from staff's perspective, there, this is something that could be incorporated within the full-blown departmental master plan. And if, if council wants to pursue that larger master plan, I think staff would suggest that this initiative could wait for that. And I do have the, the wording in the OCP on page 117 where it says, work with dog owners, interest groups, the community at large, dot, dot, dot. Considering the impacts of dogs on natural areas, this work could be undertaken in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan or as a separate initiative. So I think that it's open for discussion. I think the commission would like to see that done fairly soon. But again, from staff's perspective, that's going to be a very emotional issue in our community. There'll be a lot of people, I would expect, that want to weigh in regardless of whether they're dog owners or not. And the mobilization costs and everything else of a consultant, I think that we would be more efficient to wait for the, and incorporate it as part of our departmental master plan. A Playground Master Plan is also something that's, from a staff perspective, that could be encompassed within the master plan for the department. And that, that also is noted in the OCP on page 114. It does list in the recommendation to prepare a master plan, there are a whole bunch of bullets of what tasks should be considered as part of that. Playgrounds, park amenities are all included within that. So once again, if council would like to see the Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan move forward within your current mandate, staff's recommendation would be to hold off on this initiative and include it in that larger plan. So those are in priority order. Those are the commission's favored three initiatives from the 10 that were included in the main document. Obviously, I've spoken to the first two, and then the third one, protect rare and endangered species and ecosystems. I, you know, from a staff perspective, again, I feel we have a fairly good handle on, on doing that work. We certainly have had tremendous support through the HSP program, the Habitat Stewardship Program, and we continue to do so. And, and through that, we have increased the amount of support that park staff are providing in that regard and then providing to the, again, tremendous volunteer efforts that we see in our community. And more and more groups like the, the Green Committee or that group that came onboard a couple of years ago has been just fantastic in terms of helping out with some of that work. So we think that you, you could always do more and accelerate what's being done, but we're, we're certainly not standing by and not doing anything, so.
Thanks, Ray. And for the benefit of council, the commission's report in its entirety is in your binder. So I'll hand this over to Debbie now.
And if I make a suggestion on, we have some, a little break possible coming up just to grab some refreshments after, after the finance. I think what we might do with indulgence of staff is we might go back and ask some questions of, on these three areas, and then we can, then we can maybe take that break after that, depending on where our time is at, so. Ms. Carter.
Thank you. So the first item on our list is a Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan, and this is directly linked to the second strategic priority, which relates also to asset management. And essentially, what this would do would allow us to take, instead of the usual five-year legislated financial plan, it would allow us to look further down the road, for example, 20 years. And it would essentially encompass a, it would be a report for council, but also a tool that would allow us to update it on an annual basis or more often, as required. It ties in all of the items like the master plans that you've seen on some of these previous slides. And it's a bit of a sensitivity analysis, so it will allow us at any given time to know what projects are, are going to impact the taxes, where they're going to be funded from. And the other thing that it does is it allows you to smooth out any significant spikes in the mil rate, so you can move projects from one year to the next as needed. And like I said, it ties in directly with the asset management. And we've got information coming in regularly based on the asset management plan, so we can update this regularly to provide council with the proper tools to be able to make the decisions going forward and how we're going to fund some of these projects. So it's essentially a policy document. It sets out the principles, policies, processes, tools, and decision-making framework that would guide council and administration going forward.
Thank you, worship. So the second item is the budget software. The budget process currently is very complex, and we use multiple Excel spreadsheets currently with data entry. So you can appreciate the, the amount of work and time it takes and effort it takes to do the budget each year. So staff is, so as part of a broader IT plan, staff is proposing to purchase budgeting software that will be more centrally focused, take our, take our focus away from Excel spreadsheets and gives us the ability, it'll be housed in a single-source database and gives us the ability to move away from the data collection focus and put more emphasis on our analysis, the deep data analysis that's required during the budgeting process itself. The third item is the payroll software update. Our current payroll ADP we use, it was last implemented in 1999, so it is quite old and it, it houses on a very old Windows Server. We are proposing in Phase One to update to a current version of ADP, even though it, the current software still processes the four payrolls that we have to do. But however, it lacks in many areas and it, it doesn't give us the effective reporting that we need. It doesn't give us the ability to preview the, the payroll before it's sent off to ADP and give us balancing and stuff. We have to wait for a report to come back. There's, and there's a lot of data entry that has to happen during this payroll process. So we're proposing to upgrade the payroll and automate into more of electronic version because we're still getting pay-per-pay slips. So we want to get electronic pay slips and electronic T4s. So the second phase, so this is no more cost operationally to the organization, it's just a one-time implementation fee, so I believe a $15,000. The, the second phase is we don't currently have a human resource information system, and we would like to incorporate that into our workforce and have, have the ability to do time and, sorry, it's time and, time and attendance management, and it's piecemeal right now throughout the organization, so, and it's all manually done. So we're certainly hoping that we can give better information so there can be better data analysis for that. Bonnie, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you've pretty much covered it, Donna, just to underscore the amount of time that it takes for staff to actually pull this information together from a human resources perspective. I really do not have any ability to track or to provide reporting, and so this would help to be able to just automate things so that, so that we can better analyze data and to better plan for any sorts of programs that we want to have underway.
Our fourth item is a procurement review. Right now, the organization is decentralized framework, and many times, we use different procurement tools based on the department and commodities and services. So we don't really have a standardized template and contracts in place at this moment. We also, the last time the procurement policy was updated was 2004. We'd like to address this and also incorporate the, the social, environmental, and sustainable aspects of procurement into that procurement policy to give staff guidelines. So we're proposing a one-time increase for a consultant to come in and help us standardize the templates and contracts and also incorporate and update the policy so it can incorporate the social, economic, and environmental aspects of procurement. Our fifth item is the network switch replacement. So the network switches are the hub of communication and data collection. When the switches are down, we actually lose telephone, we use, we lose computers, and they've failed a couple of times in recent years, so, and they're in need of replacement. What staff propose is that we put aside $20,000 for the next three years and place it in reserves so we can purchase a good-quality switch, so we won't have that risk put upon the organization. The next item is the Tempest Web Server and Web Application Upgrade. Tempest has moved to a .net environment, and we successfully upgraded the front end of Tempest in 2018, and now we're required to update the, the online public-facing component of Tempest and in 2019 because it's no longer supported. So this is, this is actually a must that we have to do. The last item is the Microsoft 365 Software Upgrade. This entails, as we purchase our Microsoft products, it can happen when we have, we hire a new employee or we, we, we put new computer, or replace our computer systems. So the results of this is that we're, the organization is working on different various versions of Microsoft Office. So it lacks the, it also lacks the security that's required because the newer versions in Microsoft 365, it actually has that enhanced security for the organization that when, even when you're accepting Word docs and emails in, pardon me, Word docs and Excel spreadsheets in emails, there could actually hold a virus in there. So this system actually detects that and it will block it through the, through the process. So the district's IT consultants have recommended that we move to Microsoft Office 365, and it's on a hosted email server, which sits in the Canadian cloud. And we, this will mitigate risk. There's three benefits to this too as well, is that the one, the first benefit is that we'll be on a standard Microsoft Office and email system. As it's updated, we will get the new security and protocol updated on our system too as well. Also, if there's a disaster and we lose, we lose power or, or anything, we actually can still communicate with our mobile devices, with our emails, so that's, that's good news. And then third, the email system has a special FOI retrievable tool that will give administrative corporate services the ability to retrieve FOI items faster because it, it will have a certain search function.
So if I can just go back a little bit, back to the budgeting software item, just to advise council that prior to my time at, at the district, there was an approval by council for budgeting software due to limited resources that didn't occur, so we have set funds aside in reserves. There's $50,000 set aside in reserves for that.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to bring us back to this table here, and just, we've had a couple more people saunter in through the course of the, of the morning here. Our, our process today is we're going to be going through these items, having council ask questions, making notes. We were going to do that at the very end, but we've got a little bit of extra time here for this session, so I'm going to bring it back to these three that's all fresh in our minds, we can ask some questions. We'll probably make a short break towards 11:30, come back to this table and keep going. There will be an opportunity for the public, we have a chunk of time available for us, again, further discussion, but also to have some public come forward, but it will be towards the end, so it'll be between one and two. We'll have that some time set aside for the public to come forward at that point. So just in case anybody sitting here waiting to, when do they get to jump in? I think someone pointed at the chair and asked. The, the answer is towards the end of this process, so, thank you. And I'm going to bring it back here. Are there questions on, I'm sure there are, on some of these items that are, that are here? And I've just, if you can just ask the questions quickly and pointedly, and we'll try and get answers as quickly as possible, we'll go through. And I'll go to Councilor Green, Councilor Zelka, I'm sure we have others, thank you.
Just a question on process. Do you want me to ask the questions for each of the sections that I have or just one section? How would you like to handle that?
You know what? If you want to go through your questions, let's just go through them quickly. We're, we're all fresh in mind.
And I'll just ask the questions and then whoever wants to jump in, is that how you want it to work or?
Yeah, if you don't want to, just ask the questions on the...
So for fire services, thank you very much for all the information. On the generator, is that a cost sharing with, with police? And how is it fueled? What is the fuel? Is it, is it propane or something else?
Through the chair, there is currently, one generator is propane, the other one is diesel, diesel fuel. The oldest is the propane generator at 44, 44 years. It's being taken on through the fire department budget. We, we found with the process and especially the police budgeting process that it would just be simpler for us to take, to take the generator on for, as with the painting for both departments.
Yeah, my other question was, was the outbuilding, you know, painting, was that a cost shared? So it sounds like the police are getting a great, great support from the fire department. And what are you doing for them, Yac? Good question.
Could I, just, just as we're on that generator question, if anybody else has a question, we will do it this way. Councilor Nee?
I, I may have misunderstood what you were saying, but the proposal for the new generator, how would that be?
The new gener, the new generator would be diesel-powered.
It would be diesel.
Correct. And that, the diesel power, of course, gives us the ability, the ability in an emergency and especially in a long, a longer power outage to sustain that power.
Okay, thank, yes, Councilor Appleton, then Patterson, then Zelka.
Thank you, through you, Chair, just in sort of more talk about the generator, apologies. But in, in terms of the cost of the generator, because this is sort of an, an emergency backup component, so you'll, you'll excuse my ignorance here, but I'll ask the question anyway. I mean, is, are there sort of grants or other programs for funding that support to the purchase of that type of material, given that it's an emergency management type of item?
Yeah, we haven't been through the emergency management. There haven't been any grants that have come up to this point, but certainly we'll, I will take that point into consideration and make sure that we've followed up on any avenues in that regard.
I forget the word I wrote down, Councilor Nade, oh no, Patterson, and then Zelka.
Just another question on the emergency generator, more
Just, um, another question on the emergency generator, more curiosity, I guess, but, um, given the age of the generator then, when, when you're doing the load test on it, is it a simulated load test or is it full load test?
So, the testing, uh, the testing that was conducted by the engineering, uh, by the engineer through Emery Electric was a test on the loads, uh, that are currently present in both departments. Uh, we weren't, uh, load testing the generators per se, but it is what the actual usage and expected usage would be and they're, like I said, they are both, uh, at and above capacity currently.
And just to follow up, so we don't actually, we've never done a, a full load test of those old generator, of the old generator and equipment then?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, uh, the, the load testing they do, uh, they do on a, I say, a regular, on a routine basis, they are run up every week and, uh, simulated loads are put on them, so they will, they will just handle the loads, but certainly from a, uh, electrical safety point of view and best practices, they are over capacity.
Thank you, Council Zelka, then Council Braithwaite.
Uh, thank you very much Chair. Um, so, uh, obviously we need, we need a generator and, uh, for, especially for emergency management. Um, I know a number of other buildings such as this one has a large generator sort of just sitting out in the, in the parking lot and during an emergency, no doubt, a number of fire folks will be here since this is the emergency operations center. Um, just wondering if there was any consideration in terms of, um, what might be occurring during a disaster, um, in terms of where the equipment and the people might actually be in terms of those sort of various facilities. Um, that was sort of a first general question. Um, and on then related also, you can maybe also touch on the fact that since we are small and, and ideally agile, that we might have an opportunity to take advantage of some of the other grants that might be available in the area of solar and battery. Uh, and this would be a general question that will also be eventually going over to Parks and Rec with respect to roof replacements, um, and also we have, we have asset management with respect to building replacements for fire department. We could use this opportunity to look at other ways of generating power that could supplant, uh, the, um, more immediate needs that a generator would, would provide. If you could possibly comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, the, the first item as far as where our staff, um, certainly from the fire department's perspective, we're, uh, the majority of our personnel, vast majority of personnel, aside from myself and perhaps a deputy will be operating for, on an operational level through the fire department, so there may be one of us up here, perhaps at, at most, so, uh, we would require, uh, that power, uh, at the fire station. And as far as, uh, activities that were occurring at the station, we talk about personnel, it's, it's radios, it's compressors, it's bay doors, it's recharging, it's lights, it's heat, so it, there's, there would be a, a requirement for all those things at the fire station. Uh, rolling into, uh, your second question through the chair, uh, would be as, uh, solar and whatnot, we, we're very sensitive to the fact that there has been an, uh, asset management, uh, review done and so to go into any, uh, large, uh, projects with solar and other alternative forms of energy until there's, uh, a little more, uh, direction from council in regards to asset management, I mean, if, if that direction for looking at alternate energy comes, we'll be happy to look into it, but we thought we might be jumping the gun there in our current facility.
But just to be clear, have you looked at like battery backup models as well as a possible thing?
Haven't looked at battery backup models, uh, my understanding would be the amount of power that is required would, would require a massive battery.
That would be my understanding as well, yeah, but it's just curious, have you had looked at it, so, yeah.
Is this appropriate time to ask a question about, uh, the dispatch question?
No.
No?
No, we're really on capital project pieces here, so I think we need to keep, we have a limited amount of time here. Council Braithwaite?
Uh, thank you, through you Chair. Um, so I would say that the forty-four years and thirty-five years, probably we've got a lot of bang for our buck for that, but, um, following up on something that Council Appleton said about, uh, grants, is it possible, um, and perhaps this is a question for, uh, Ms. Carter, um, is it possible to use money from the gas tax, tax fund to fund something like this or does that fall out of that purview? Cause I know they've opened it up, that, that money up to be able to use it for different things.
Uh, through the chair, off the top of my head, uh, I wouldn't wanna hazard a guess, I'd have to look at the gas tax, uh, regulations again, but we could certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. I think maybe just bringing it up a, a level as well, I, I, there's a few things here like this that are, um, sort of plat, facilities-based, planned replacement-based, um, uh, and, and just, some of these things you should, we look at and wonder, is there, should they not be, is there some opportunity to, to take on more of a, a strategic facilities plan so that we're, we're mapping these things for all the buildings and, and carpets and everything else in there and, and building a maintenance plan? Is, is there, is there any way we can kind of bring that, uh, and I'll go to Mr. Haran for that, because it seems to overlay a lot of the, the issues that are being brought forward here?
Uh, yes Chair, that's a good question, um, so in the asset management program, there's, uh, one of the projects is a facilities master plan, uh, but that's one of those projects that comes a little bit later. Um, and in our discussions about asset management and, and this is, this will come up regularly, there's the question of the long-term planning, uh, but then there's immediate needs and some of them have been deferred for many years, so there's kind of a, a chicken before the egg question happening right now. So, a lot of the initiatives that are related to buildings are kind of that, those things that staff are identifying as, we need to address these now, understanding though, that there needs to be a broader, longer-term plan, uh, related to facilities.
Okay, I'm just, in this, in this time, I'm sort of thinking, much like we're talking about doing for the infrastructure and pieces, if, are we, are we in good, better shape maybe to look at pooling all the different aspects of, of these, maybe not the, 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 the generator which is a bit more specific, but of the painting and the roof replacements and these things and, and starting to set aside a, uh, I'll maybe turn this to, uh, to one of the, the, either Ms. Rela or Ms. Carter, um, to start setting aside something along those lines, like a facilities reserve that we can kind of start, either, maybe that we'll be paying directly into some of the immediate needs out of that, but, but looking at that, is that, is there any sense to, to starting that process now?
Um, I'll just, I'll just take, uh, uh, there may be something to add to what I'm about to say, but I, I hopefully will, this will be helpful to, this discomfort, I think, that we feel as we deal with this issue, um, there's multiple, uh, facilities-related tasks, there's a lot of, that, that, they're not, uh, you know, they're significant projects. Um, this discomfort that we're all feeling around this is, is, I pointing it out because, um, we've talked about it a bit before, but I think we need to think about it again, there is no particular place in staff at this time in terms of a, a director or a manager, um, that handles this, this task and, and this was not done really in the past other than, uh, smaller one-off projects per year, um, so there, i- it's a good idea and it's the way that we should do it, but there is no solution right now about, well, should there be a staff member? Is there a director that should take this on? Um, this is over and above, even coming up with the estimates, um, of what the tasks are gonna be, uh, and then if they're approved, uh, managing those contractors as they come in, i- is work that is over and above the, the, the chockers, uh, work that we're doing day-to-day. So, this is one of our key challenges related to how to deal with this as well, so I, I don't know that there is a, a solution to say right now, I think we have to kind of, uh, be comfortable being uncomfortable about this one for, for now and then come up with a, the longer-term plan of how to deal with this.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the other question I had related, because it, it came up to my mind on the, on the generator one, but it's true of a few, uh, there's a few capital things here that are fairly substantial in cost that are fairly urgent, but maybe aren't, aren't like, have to be done this next three months piece, but they're important and I'm wondering if for a procedural perspective, we, we, I know we're gonna get to the how we fund things later, but is there a, is there a, a criteria here, we could say we, this is a great model, uh, this will go forward when we can find a grant to offset some of the costs and, and maybe it'll be this year, maybe that'll be next year, but we approve it sort of contingent upon getting some, some assistance with that? Is that even a model we can consider, uh, going forward?
Certainly as we go through the estimates process, we will be looking at all possible options for funding these projects and bringing forward recommendations to Mayor and Council at that time.
Okay, thank you. Is there, sorry, I, I should have hijacked that, that discussion there for a second. Uh, is there anything else from the fire department? Maybe we'll just wrap up anything else in the questions on the fire department that people had?
Thank you, through you Chair. Uh, just with regards to, uh, upgrade the door, uh, for, uh, apparatus, I guess I'm, I'm asking a question around, I, I, I hear you on the, the design of the apparatus for the enclosed cab and I'm just, I'm just asking, wanting to ask a question about mandated design and, and mandated standards for apparatus that are, that are driving the need for the larger door, I guess I, I've, I've, I've sort of been informed and sort of become aware that there's sort of a trend towards progressively larger and more complex and more expensive apparatus and so, I guess I'm, and this is not an easy question to answer and I appreciate it Chief, but, um, you know, is it actually potentially more cost-effective to design a more effective apparatus when this existing one that normally is housed in that bay, um, can we get a better, um, more efficient apparatus rather than a bigger door?
Uh, through you Chair, uh, the apparatus, uh, specifications come through, it's a consensus standard through NFPA and it has to do with the equipment we carry, water carried, hose carried, equipment carried. Uh, currently the manufacturers, to achieve that level of apparatus which also, also, uh, affects insurance rates, uh, as the Fire Underwriters Survey, uh, they, through FUS, they determine, uh, what a class A apparatus is, what it includes and everything else. There isn't, uh, to my knowledge, isn't the ability to put an apparatus that's even smaller into that bay. Uh, one of the advantages that we have right now is that, is the replacement of our rescue vehicle at light, uh, command and light rescue vehicle that we got, our Battalion One, it, because it can carry, uh, much more equipment than our last, uh, vehicle, we are actually able to use that apparatus that will be, uh, significantly shorter than our existing engine in the larger, uh, nineteen sixty-five bay, if, I hope I've answered your question.
I think that what you're alluding to is exactly sort of my, my point is to say that there, there are newer sort of more efficient styles, I, I think about the new Battalion vehicle as, as being sort of more efficient in its delivery, doing more in a smaller package for want of a better word, and I'm oversimplifying here and I apologize, but, um, so I, I, I'm wondering about the general idea of applying the same idea to a vehicle that would fit in this bay.
And certainly the vehicle that will be, uh, fitting, uh, in this bay, uh, through you Chair, is, uh, significant, would be significant, significantly smaller than our existing fire engine that we're utilizing as our number one apparatus today.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Braithwaite?
Um, thank you, through you Chair, um, just, uh, going on the doors as well, um, because I seem to remember a few years back when we, um, were, when you came to us, the fire department came to us in regards to changing some of the windows at the fire hall and, um, we had a bit of a kerfuffle about that, um, and, uh, I think it was the finials or something that, uh, the Heritage was, had a concern over, so I'm wondering what the conversation has been so far with Heritage in regards to changing the frontage of the building?
Uh, I've just been in preliminary discussions with, uh, building and planning and have gone over the design requirements, the details and the symmetry of the building and that's why I do mention in the report that there is some extra, uh, money, uh, again, if that becomes an issue, uh, for the building, we will, uh, be dealing with Heritage, but we believe we can, uh, find a solution based on the proposed project.
And just to follow up to that, so Heritage often has money in their budget to do certain things, um, around buildings and so I'm wondering if there might be a chance there for them to even throw five or ten thousand dollars towards that, maybe?
Uh, through you Chair, it, perhaps we will investigate that and I will say that from the original, uh, point that we put this proposal forward, we have, uh, there, looks like there's a level, uh, a simpler, uh, way of going about things and there won't be any dramatic change to the front of the hall needed.
Thank you, Council Green?
Yes, thank you, and just in response to Council Braithwaite's comments on Heritage funding, um, it will be the foundation that you would be looking at. They have, they have quite a, a pot of money actually, so it might be worth a discussion with, uh, the Heritage Foundation.
Uh, through you Chair, yes, we'll take that into consideration.
I believe like the maximum is ten thousand dollars though, if they can give out, so it's, but it's, it's, it helps if it's possible. Any other questions of, of fire? The only question I had, again, maybe this will just come back to more the budgeting process and the funding question, but, yeah, we do have substantial reserves in the fire department specifically for equipment, not for this. However, just from a funding process, if, if it may be possible for us not to borrow money or to put it all on taxation, but to take money out of some of those other equipment reserves and pay it back stretched over say five years, so that should be twenty-five thousand a year and taking that out, cause we're putting that money, that money's in the reserves currently, I'm just, it's one option that we might have for, for not putting it all on taxation until one year to spread it out without borrowing. I don't know if the, Ms. Carter, if that's a possibility?
Yes, Your Worship, it certainly is and, and, uh, we'll be looking at all of those options as we come forward at estimate, so we'll certainly take that into consideration.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we, just the next department, huh, actually, yeah, we've got a bit more time. Uh, oh, Parks Recreation and Culture, the, the simple ones. Uh, Council Green?
I will keep my questions simple. Um, thank you very much and this is a comprehensive, um, outline through you, Mayor Two, Mr. Herman, thank you very much. And, um, my question was just a general one around grants and partnerships in terms of funding and I know that Parks and Rec are really good at finding grants, utilizing the grant system, but I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, where grants and partnerships are available, I was thinking of partnerships with, with local community associations or groups that, that might help in some way fund s- some of these projects. And also, um, just wondered about a recycling system, I, I know a lot of people have talked about the fact that could Parks and Rec perhaps adopt, um, a blue box system throughout the municipality, is that, is, is that on your radar? And my final question is, there was a dog report done in twenty twelve that was comprehensive, I think, will that dog report be considered as part of the dog policy, um, deliberations? It was a really, you know, it had a lot of detail and I know there were a lot of recommendations made, I, I believe over twenty. So, those are my questions, thank you very much, Mr. Herman.
Uh, thank you through the chair, uh, with respect to grants, um, staff are always on the hunt for, uh, for grant funding although, um, one of the positions that is usually active in, in that role is currently vacant, so, uh, hopefully soon to be filled, so, uh, we've fallen behind in researching some of the recent grant, uh, opportunities and programs that have come out, but we'll certainly, uh, that's on my list of things to, to try and get done in the next little while. Uh, the recycling issue is on our radar, I know the manager of Parks has had, uh, several discussions over the past few years with the superintendent of Public Works, it's not, the issue as I understand it is not so much, um, getting some infrastructure out there to collect recyclables, it's what we do with them afterwards and who does it and do we have, where do we have space to actually do that? So, for instance, when we've had some larger events like the tea party at Willows, um, it's largely, that effort is largely volunteer-driven in terms of taking the recyclables out and, and separating them and all that, so I think it's something we would still like to pursue, um, and we'll bring, you know, given your comment, we'll, uh, maybe resurrect that discussion sooner rather than later. Uh, with respect to the dog report, absolutely, I think when the time comes, whether it's going to be a separate initiative or part of the master plan, we would look to all the source documents and plans that, that exist and funnel those into that process, so I would anticipate the same with that, uh, that dog report as well.
Thanks very much.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council Nee? And we're gonna run out of time here fairly soon, but we can reopen these conversations after, at the end of the overall system. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, through you Chair, um, to Mr. Herman, I, th- thanks for this overview, you've really thought things through over, of the course of a number of years. The question I have has to do with the master plan that you talked about and the possibility of segueing the, if I understood you correctly, uh, the dog use policies as well as the playground master plan. And if, if they do kind of come together under that one umbrella of the, um, Parks and Rec Culture Master Plan, two questions regarding that, does that change the budget in any way? And then the other part of that is with the timeline, if, if that was decided, uh, would you keep the timeline at twenty twenty-one, given that the playground master plan is prior to that and so too is the doggies, like, could you just speak to how you would imagine the, the timing of that?
Sure, as far as the budget goes, all three of those initiatives, the, the playground master plan, the doggies policies and actually the full departmental master plan, those estimates are all fairly loose or, or fairly order of magnitude type, um, estimates, so depending on the outcome of these deliberations and, and maybe, uh, estimates, we need to put a little bit more, uh, effort into trying to nail those down. Certainly I would expect that if council wishes to incorporate the other two things into the departmental master plan, the cost of that would go up. into the departmental master plan, the cost of that would go up for sure. By how much, I don't know. Just intuitively, I would expect there to be some savings in terms of mobilization costs and, and things, but also just the continuity of the plan itself, ensuring that all those different elements are, are kind of thought through at the same time. I think there's benefit to that. I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
I think, that's really what I was most, well, one, the efficiencies you've spoken to, it was the timeline, really.
Oh, yeah. You know what? I think staff are fairly open. If council felt that they would like to accelerate that master, to incorporate everything into the master plan and do it a year earlier than that, we can work with that timeline. That year was just selected as, you know, the timeline for the long-term recommendations was seven plus years. 2021 would be the first year. So that, it was the earliest year, based on that recommendation, that we could kind of tackle that work, but we'd be open to what council would like to see happen.
I'm just cognizant of time here. We do want to get to the other presentations before we get, so maybe, can I just give people, say, four minutes? Grab coffee, anything else you want to do? Come back to this table, and we'll go, we'll kick off into the administrative, corporate services, engineering, public works, and then come back. Thank you.
So, welcome back, everyone. Welcome back, and I just, we'll get into the next session here. I just, a couple little reminders. So, what we're gonna do is we'll go through the next set, much like we did with the other directors, for the other departments, and then we'll pull it back and we'll have a general questions, more time for questions. So, this is not, the question time is not over, but we do need to get through the presentation portion of this in a way that allows us to go in detail through all of the potential capital and operational projects. So, with that, and also reminder that because of, we're just, this is one big, long, continuous meeting, everything is livestreamed through the breaks and everything, so just be aware, you'll be on TV, so don't make any rude gestures or anything when you're laughing about. I'll hand this back to Ms. Vrella to hand it over to staff.
Thank you, your worship. So, next up, Deb Hopkins and Warren Jones for Corporate Services and Administration New Initiatives.
Thank you. So, our first request is for Committee Room Meeting Refit and Lobby Viewing. So, what we staff are proposing is to set up a digital display unit of some sort that we can use in this committee room. Right now, it's difficult to make presentations or view visual information in there around a laptop with a large group of people. We also don't have any network connectivity in there, so we're unable to access internal software applications or information that's stored on the network. So, that would result in having a bit more of a functional meeting space in the municipal hall. The other thing that we are requesting is to create a connectivity to the lobby TV out there, so that in council meetings or public hearings, committee of the whole, where there is a large turnout of members of the public who don't all fit into our council chambers, they can still observe the meeting procedures as well as hear it, makes them feel a little bit more engaged and connected to what's going on. And it also provides a little bit of accommodation to people who may need something out that they can't do or access in the chambers and still be able to be a part of that meeting process. The next piece that we are looking at is to increase our budget to, our existing budget to website support. So, our tech support comes from a contractor, and we are requesting to increase the funds that we have currently put aside for that, so that we can access more assistance, meaning that we can leverage on either new available technologies that we just maybe don't know about, or make sure that we're using what we have most efficiently and effectively. So, this would allow us to just put in some more service requests. We are also proposing to do a website upgrade. We've heard from the public and council and staff that the present website is not quite meeting all of our needs and requirements. So, what we would like to do is do a review of what our needs are, all of our needs are, make sure that we're meeting those needs of the stakeholders, introduce some more functionality and services, and create something that is allowing us to up our communication game a little bit. We have heard that this is a significant tool. We know staff are using it that way, but we've also heard from the public that this is one of their key ways of engaging with the district, and so we'd like to make some significant improvements there. We also have a request for funding for records management. So, records management is a critical piece of our daily municipal operations, and our current system is falling behind, making it a little bit difficult to retain our organizational knowledge. It's a little bit cumbersome in locating and retrieving records. So, we'd like to bring in a, well, really, to devise a new program that will allow us to implement some best practices and make sure that we're also meeting our legal obligations. This is gonna be a multi-year program that is gonna have some ongoing operational requirements to make sure that we're still meeting those best practices and legal requirements, and ongoing staff training and those really critical pieces. We also have a request for public engagement. So, this is something that we've been hearing a lot about from all the stakeholders, that we need to start incorporating more upfront resources into engagement activities. This would allow us to explore some of the recommendations that were provided to us in 2018 from the Mayor's Task Force on Public Engagement, and look at how we can implement some of those recommendations. And again, make sure that we are creating an engagement strategy that is working for the citizens and for council and for staff, and to evaluate it, and make sure that what we've developed is actually, is hitting the mark. We'd like to do some FOI and media training for council and senior management, so this isn't just Freedom of Information, it's the whole act for us. That's to make sure, again, that we are aware of what our personal responsibilities are, and that we are meeting legislation. And that media training will also help to create a bit of a framework for best practices and a shared approach to communicating critical district information and making sure that we are just, we've got a good strategy going forward for communication issues management, sort of those best practices. We, I'm gonna hand this over to Bonnie, actually, to talk about staff training and development.
Good segue, Deb, thanks. So, thank you. So, what my main proposed strategic objective is to create a centralized corporate staff training and development budget and program, which would be managed by Human Resources, and would include broader corporate training and development initiatives. So, this is something that we've been kind of, as a district, been doing on an ad hoc basis, and I'm requesting that we get some support to allow us to provide foundational training for our staff. And that is different than the department-specific budgets that we've had for training, which is more department-specific training. My plan for this year, if supported, is to actually provide respectful workplace training, continuation of respectful workplace training, training in customer service and management and leadership development. And one thing I would say is that with training, some of our, some of the training that we put on is, we are required to provide to staff. Respectful workplace is a good example of that, where we are required by work-safe legislation to provide training to our employees in that area. So, that's something that's going to be a continued need, because we, as new employees come on, we do have to be able to provide that training to them. So, really, the investment in staff training, I believe, is integral to the success of the corporation in achieving its strategic priorities. We have to do all of this work through our people, through our staff, and I believe that we have to ensure that we have a highly skilled workforce, so we work towards that in order to ensure success and sustainability in the quality programs and services that we provide. The other thing, too, is that's also important, is that we have a really competitive job market right now, and one of the things that I think would be really, really important in terms of sustainability and being able to sort of market ourselves, and I don't really like the term employer of choice, because it's so widely used, but I think that we can do many things to make the District of Oak Bay an attractive employer. And staff training and development are branding ourselves as a district that really, really embraces ongoing learning and development of our employees, I think is a great thing in terms of attraction and retention of staff. So, I think it's all a good thing. I think that, you know, we're seeing evidence of difficulties now and challenges in attracting people to come and work for us. We have an excellent staff, and I think that we just need to be able to build on that and have a more planned approach to our staff training here. And it's all about continuous improvement, too, and just being able to do the work that we need to do in better ways, and just, we always have to get better. I mean, we have a great staff at the District of Oak Bay, but we always have to sort of push ourselves to get better and be more innovative in the approaches that we use. So, I just think that it's, this is a way that we can mitigate the risk of, you know, losing really valuable staff and sort of being attractive for new people coming onboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. The last three items on here are all projects that are about to be undertaken or currently underway, that don't have any associated funding requirements with them. That's the Commissions and Committees Review that we are hoping to undertake and complete a little bit later this year. The Budget Process Review is happening as we speak, and it's a shared, a shared piece of work between Finance and Corporate Services, and we have the ongoing organizational optimization piece. Again, that's just reviewing how, what we're doing and how we're doing it.
If I could just add one point here. If there are matters that are relating to land or labor, those will be brought forward to council for discussion in closed meetings, so that's probably an important one to note right here.
Thank you.
Yes, hello. So, this first group of items here on this list are part of a program of-
For those of those watching at home, we've just switched over to the Director of Engineering, Mr. Haran, for the Engineering and Public Works.
I'm tempted from now on to just introduce my, "This is me!" Okay, so, all right, let's talk Public Works and Engineering Services projects. So, the first group that are on this list are part of a program of municipal hall changes that address health, safety, and sustainability issues in the hall. So, if you recall, as we talked during our discussions about Asset Management Program as a concept, the facilities plans, there's some proposals as, that certain facilities such as municipal could be replaced at some point in the future at significant capital expense, but that the idea that goes along with that is whatever plan happens, whether the hall is renovated and sustained for a longer term or replaced, there's an annual requirement for renovations to keep the facility operating properly moving forward. So, some of these projects are related to those types of issues. A few minutes ago, we touched on a little bit of the point I was gonna make next, but I'll just say, just to kind of reemphasize this, a lot of these tasks here, they fall under in today, on Engineering Services, but they're actually Chief Cockle that did all the heavy lifting to do, to talk to contractors, to find the estimates, kind of as a passion project for him before he left, and then he handed it off to me to say, "Dan, good luck." And so, they're here, and I'll go through them one by one to talk about them a little bit, and then just reemphasize that point to say, it is an extra level of effort to do the planning, and then, and it doesn't, there are some municipalities in some places that have specific people who deal with facilities as their primary role, and we don't have such a role in the district, at least not for all of the facilities. So, the first one is the Municipal Hall Heating Computer System. So, the system's out of date, the software that helps us control the heating in the building. It's, it does not, as we've all, for those, for those watching at home, most of us have put jackets on in the last 15 minutes. So, and that's, we laugh, but it's true, and what happens is it's difficult for staff to do the programming of the thermostats like you would at home, where you say, "This is when we want the heat to kick in, this is when we want it to turn off," and if there's, most weekends, you don't need the building to be heated, but a weekend like this one, if we were able to change it, we would be able to do that, and we can't do that at this time. So, this allows us to, this project for staff to make those changes, and then for our heating and ventilation, air conditioning contractor to do some remote access as well to help us. The next project there is about painting municipal hall, both interior and exterior. So, the reason for this issue is that the interior walls can no longer just simply be cleaned. There's excessive peeling and staining, and so cleaning is actually a challenge because of how old these walls are. Exterior, the situation is similar to the fire chief described with his painting project there, which is that the, there's exposure of brick and soffit material, meaning that without the painting done, there's likely an accelerated deterioration of that material for this building. The next item is the carpet replacement for municipal hall. In this case, the carpet here in the hall hasn't been cleaned in several years, the, the carpet can't be cleaned, because there's a risk of accelerated deterioration, it might fall apart if we try to clean it. The deterioration as it is right now, there's a trip hazard in multiple places, and then, of course, the health and safety concerns around the cleaning. Next is the fire alarm replacement and main door replacement. I'll talk about both of those at the same time. Essentially, they have the same issue. Both of those systems have reached the end of their service life, so as they have failures in them, which occurs more frequently now, the ability to fix those failures is becoming harder and harder, to the point where we predict there may be a time where we just won't be able to fix the next, a failure that occurs. So, the idea is now it's time, end of life, to replace those systems. This addresses some of the accessibility issues, some of our security issues, and then, of course, the, no, I've covered them both, security, safety. There you go. Okay, so that's the first chunk of municipal hall facilities type of projects. The next one is a very quick one that we'll talk about. It's District to Support to CRD Watershed Team. And this one's a bit different than some of the other projects that are talked about today, because that funding is actually funding that's been in the budget the last several years, and the key ask here is around council's commitment to continue to fund this going forward, more than what has been done in the past, and not just, not in terms of money, but in terms of time. So, what has happened, for those of you who aren't aware, is that this is, first of all, what this is, is the Baucher Creek Initiative, is a group of people, a committee, that does work on your behalf to steward Baucher Creek as, in terms of the Hundred Year Plan, the blueprint. So, that involves municipal staff from San Ash, Victoria, and here, as well as the Capital Regional District, and then community groups such as the Oak Bay Community Association, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is, this is funding that Oak Bay has approved each year in the last three years to pay for one day of work for a CRD worker to lead this activity, and it's been very valuable. The challenge is, in Oak Bay, the funding approval has been done, yes, but every year. So, there's no way to make a longer-term commitment in terms of even a project. The project has to start and end in a fiscal year, which is difficult to kind of do long-term projects, start and finish for this kind of stuff. So, it's all we're asking for here is just a commitment to fund the project for a certain period of time, and then potentially to review, you know, say, within five years, to say, "Is this something that the district wants to continue to do?" The next item is the LED streetlight project. So, for those of you who aren't aware, the district completed about two-thirds of the, I'll just say as a rough number, two-thirds of the streetlights in the district have been upgraded to LED lights in the 2015, 2016, and 2017 timeframe, and we've already seen significant electricity savings in terms of how they, how much they cost. They cost about one-third of the, of an, of a older streetlight to operate, so that's great. So, what we're proposing is to finish the project. The last one is a minor one, but important and fundamental, actually, is that Public Works, prior to 2013, had one old computer down there, and it was to operate the gas pump system down there, and then we kind of collusured a payroll system on top of that, and then since 2013, computers have been added. What we need to do now is just add some workstations, so that our public work supervisors can do work order management. So, that means figuring out what work needs to happen, capturing whatever data is collected in the field about the work that was done, and then, and then making sure it gets put into a proper electronic format, so that we can do lifecycle asset management planning of our assets. So, this is kind of fundamental, relatively minor project, but fundamental to our future needs related to maintenance management, asset management. So, that's the first half. You'll see in the table, whoops, I'm knocking my own microphone here, you'll see in the table a very solid black line there, and that's there on purpose, just to differentiate between the projects that are on top and the projects on their bottom, and where there's the difference is just how the costs are captured, and I'll talk about that in a second. But there's, what we did here is a little bit different than the rest of the slides, and the reason why we did it is to try to create, to create less confusion rather than more confusion. So, at the beginning, as I explain this, you might kind of raise your eyebrow and go, "I don't get it," but the reason we're trying to do it this way is to show, with the previous documents that we provided, what we're planning or what we're proposing for a five-year plan. The, so what's happening here is, in the previous lines and other tables, you'll see, you know, one-off cost increase, but what's below that black line just actually shows the full-on budget numbers. So, you're saying, "How much are we gonna be spending on storm sewer rehabilitation?" That's the number there, it's $300,000 or $400,000. So, you can kind of tie what we're planning to do against the targets that are in the Asset Management Program. So, if that's not clear, hopefully, I'll come back to it again and clarify. The first project group there is Transportation Safety Improvements. Now, what we're doing there is trying to lump together the various things that happen year-to-year related to transportation safety, but trying to show, to ask for a predictable commitment for funding year-to-years, so that we can, we can plan more effectively for what's gonna happen in the out-years. So, typically, these are the projects that are intersection changes, it's traffic calming such as crosswalks, or changes in road configuration. So, in a typical year, the budget is, say, $100,000 for traffic signals upgrade, is what, is what it normally would cost, is a rough order of magnitude, and then a crosswalk, say, Brighton Avenue was $20,000, Cranmore is just signals, so that's $15,000. So, what we're trying to do is the demand and the need for transportation-related improvements is significant, but there's never been a block in the budget that says, "This is what the plan is outgoing more than a year ahead." So, that's what this proposal is about. Eventually, the Asset Management Program will deliver a transportation master plan, which this funding is meant to tie into that plan later, is a gradual incremental increase in funding to deal with transportation issues. The next line is the Infrastructure Reserve Saving Program, which is the proposal that came from the Asset Management Briefings related to savings in reserves to deal with asset management issues. This number, what's showing on the slides there, is the annual 2% of taxes set aside each year into the reserves to deal with asset management infrastructure challenges. So, based on this, by 2023, the number saved is 7.7 million. The next line down in red is the Pavement Management Strategy, and again, reflecting the direction received from council, we've changed the number to 1%, so 1% per year, so the gradual increase by 2023, the plan would be a pavement management budget of approximately 1.7 million. And then finally, at the bottom, this is another good example of something that has been, the funding is, has been a bit discretionary year-to-year. So, some years, there'll be a storm main project, and some years, there won't be, and it's usually budget-driven rather than needs-driven. So, what we're asking for in this strategic priorities discussion is to say, there is needs to be a minimum amount of storm sewer rehabilitation money in the budget, and then that, and that commitment gradually increases year-to-year, and in the five-year plan, so that we can say, in 2020, these are the projects we're gonna do and plan for, and then in the out-years as well, do the same type of approach. And that's it.
That's a lot. Ms. Vrella, back to you.
Thank you, your worship. So, I have to apologize to Dan for not introducing him, but when I looked up and I read Municipal Hall Heating System, and I looked over and I saw Dan had put on his parka, I got afraid or some, I had a speed wobble there, so I apologize for not introducing you, but good recovery. And now, Bruce Anderson, Director of Building and Planning, will talk about his new initiatives.
Thank you. Good morning, I think, still, I believe. What I wanted to do by way of introduction is indicate that, yes, these are new initiatives that are being proposed over the next five-year timeframe, but they're ones that we had the opportunity to discuss, three of them at least, at our housing session that we had January 29th, I believe was when we met last. So, the initiatives that you see on the slide do emanate from that session. We put a little bit more meat on the bones, I'll explain those briefly to you. What I wanted to mention is that each of the initiatives you see above are really based or derived from our official community plan, whether it be policy direction or implementation that's been identified in that 2014 plan that's adopted. The first three that you see on the slide, Housing Review, the infill housing for neighborhoods, and then the Village Area Plans, are each related to the housing strategic initiative discussion that we've had. So, to begin with, the Housing Review, we spoke to this as including a Housing Needs Report, a provincial identified item that we think there should be some funding available from a grant perspective in the spring, and it also represents, I think, for us, a really good opportunity to start the process regarding sort of a comprehensive approach to addressing access to housing in Oak Bay. The Needs Report in particular is identified, but also there's a second component identified in this initiative, and that's around community engagement. And the Needs Report really does, I mean, I guess it's implicit in the title of saying, but it really does take a fairly detailed look at what the housing needs are in this community, and based on demographic, economic information, housing types, and identifying the need for those over the course of the next five years is also a part of that. So, an outcome of that information, that report, I think it's incumbent upon us to sort of explore what that means with the community. So, the component that I talk about, the community engagement, is really about what did we find out with respect to housing needs, and have a conversation with the community about what that represents, in a way, setting the stage for the second initiative, which is identified as, termed as infill housing for neighborhoods. The focus there is really on, on housing types that, as identified, I'll just note them, duplexes, triplexes, laneway houses, garden suites, inherited conversions, those were identified as, as a need for exploration in our community plan. The comprehensive sort of approach to this, it's identified in this initiative, is that we would spring from the housing needs and the community information that we've gleaned from our first initiative, and then start to look more closely at how we would basically implement infill housing opportunities, and they often term that the missing middle in the community, but it is typically other than single-family dwelling and multifamily dwelling. So, it's the space between and the forms in between that we would, we would undertake. This, from my perspective, is something that also requires a good deal of information and development of information around what those forms are like, what, how they perform and function in our, in our neighborhoods, looking at some design components, and then also, an outcome of this might be some possible changes that we would make to our zoning bylaw to perhaps accommodate the housing types that we identify as ones that we want to see in the community. So, it would have also a fairly significant community engagement process, one that's informed, as I said, by the information that we develop as we go along. So, I think that in part helps to explain the level of investment required for us to sort of pursue these, these housing types and where they would fit in Oak Bay's context. So, I noted multifamily residential and mixed-use development is part of this next initiative that's titled, "There is Village Area Plans." Our community plan does identify areas, our villages and our corridors as having some opportunity for multifamily residential development and mixed-use development. What this represents is taking a look at, at springing from the housing needs, whether or not we need to look at trying to manage some of our, maybe our little bit higher-density multifamily residential growth in the community, and looking at these, the villages and the corridor areas as potential for that. Again, a process that involves a good deal of design and information presented to the community and discussion around how those forms might fit and function within, again, the context of Oak Bay. The fourth initiative that's on the screen is contemplated in our implementation, direction of the community plan. It's here as a comprehensive zoning bylaw update. Uh, it's, it's here as a comprehensive zoning bylaw update. Our, uh, current zoning bylaw is nineteen eighty-six. It's had a few revisions since. So it's not completely nineteen eighty-six version, but it certainly, uh, uh, from our perspective, needs to be reviewed to, to. Bring it up to date, to, to bring best practices into play into our zoning bylaw, um, provides some, some more clarity. Uh, with, uh, respect to the community, with respect to the development industry, uh, planning staff, there's, there's an awful lot of complexity. In our, in our zoning bylaw. It deals with a complex topic that of managing built form in the community, but it's, uh, one that needs a pretty significant. Review from staff's perspective. And so that's identified as, uh, uh, something in our five-year program that we think we should undertake. Uh, I, I should have noted that with the housing review, the province has announced that, that there is, uh, of course, there's a bill that. Gives us direction on preparing such a report, but there are regulations that are being drafted that would provide for that grant opportunity. So I just mentioned that we would. Pursue some grant opportunity associated with that first initiative, housing, uh, the housing review. So I think with that, I'm complete. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Can I, I just have one quick question from a, a, a timing perspective for us on, on budget because. One of the things, of course, that we face with our budget cycle being approved essentially in May, uh, and some of these projects, uh, coming into twenty twenty. Is there, is there a logic in actually approving funding in twenty nineteen for these twenty twenty projects? So as we're wrapping up the needs. And we're moving into the other pieces, we're not going to be kind of caught behind, uh, than having to wait for budget approval to be able to even start the process on some of these other pieces?
Yes, uh, there is. And in fact, um, the five-year financial plan tries to anticipate some of those projects, um, and that would be the authorization. Required prior to May when we actually go through the estimates process. Does that make sense?
So as long as they're captured in the five-year cap or five-year financial plan, we, the work can start without having to go through the estimates process?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I believe that wraps up our piece, but now, Ms. Rella, you had a few things you wanted to just sort of wrap things up from the staff side. And then we'll get back to some of the questions, I think, on this side of the table.
Thank you, your worship. So first of all, I, I really want to thank this team, uh, for pulling this presentation and the compilation of information. That is before you together. Um, one of the things about innovation and great work is that it looks easy on the surface. Um, but this has been the, the, uh, pulling together of a lot of hard work by staff. So I'd like to congratulate the team at the table. I'd like to also put a special thanks out to Hugh, who is making sure we're, uh, streamlined for the benefit of people who can't attend this meeting. Uh, Victoria and Cindy, who have done a lot, uh, to pull the information together. So a special thank you to all of them. Um, I, I think it's also important to care, clarify for the gallery that, um, the suggestion of projects that are before you. Really are the best recommendations department by department. The departments didn't get together to negotiate what projects came forward. I think it's important to know that the philosophy behind this is we wanted council to know the best individual department recommendations coming forward. And there's a lot here for you to consider. I think that leads into the idea that governance will determine what goes in, uh, what is kicked off or what is pushed out over time. And that's a challenge before you. Uh, and in a subsequent slide, we're going to talk a little bit more about seeking your direction for budget going forward. So I'm going to hand this over to Debbie, the Director of Finance, to talk to you about the totals that are before you.
Thanks, Lou. So essentially what we've done on this slide is taken department by department and year by year, the projects that have been presented to you today. And, uh, you can see the totals year by year. So for example, in twenty nineteen, considering all of the projects and initiatives. The total amount would be two million and seventy-three thousand or two million seventy-four rounded. And that continues on for each of the years. Um, it's important to note that this isn't all tax money. So I want to reiterate that again. Some of it obviously would be, however, we will be looking at other funding opportunities such as reserves and grants. And borrowing and those sorts of things. Um, so. I don't know if you have any specific questions around this. I think it's fairly self-explanatory.
Counselor Green?
Through you, Mayor. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Carter. If, if we wanted to expedite one of the projects that is currently laid out. In, in, in a timeframe by staff, which I really appreciate. How would we? I guess the question is how would, first of all, we'd have to agree as a group, but how would we, um, approach budgeting around these kinds of totals? I mean, how, if we expedited something, obviously that would, that would increase at the front end, you know, the, the, the allocation. Um, I'm sorry, I'm not being very clear, but. Do you get my gist?
I, I think I do.
Thank you.
Um, so council certainly has the option to expedite any project that they wish. Um, it's a little bit more difficult. In looking at an individual project as opposed to the entire budget and how the, how that's going to impact. So. Um, but a one-off decision is available at council's discretion. We would look at possible funding sources and what the impact. For example, if it was going to affect taxes, uh, what the impact would be based on that and bring that information forward for council. Consideration and, um, a council resolution would be required.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Nae, I had you first, but I didn't go to you.
No, I, just two questions. Um, so we can just ask a question of any aspect of it right now or?
Yeah, if you want to touch on this particular piece, that's probably where we're at.
I just, I'm probably not reading this correctly. I. On the, uh, proposed initiative estimates, the public works in engineering when you look across time. What, it, it looks to me from what you presented previously that goes up and from twenty nineteen, it's got the highest number and twenty twenty-three, it's got. The lowest. Is that because the assets aren't in that? In that number or could you help me understand that?
Sure. Public works in engineering is a little bit of a different beast as well in the way the information has been presented. So this slide here only shows the incremental. Costs, um, whereas when, uh, uh, Mr. Hiran was presenting his portion, there were four projects at the bottom of his slide. That were shown as total, not incremental.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll just add, as an example, uh, if the budget in twenty eighteen for, uh, pavement management was say six hundred thousand. And we are proposing that twenty nineteen should be seven hundred thousand, that's a hundred thousand increase. So that would be part of the number that you see for twenty nineteen. So even, so, and, and what I did earlier in the slides was show you the actual number of six hundred or seven hundred. So that's where I was trying to explain that there's a bit of confusing aspects there. So what you're seeing is, as, as Debbie was saying, that's the, an increase over. Uh, from year to year, uh, uh, of the, from the base, basically.
Question on the housing and planning, but you're going to wait for?
I think we can come back to some of the specifics, but I think it's, you know, maybe we don't have a large enough audience here, but I think a, a gasp is probably in order. Maybe you needed more red at the bottom there, um, because those numbers are outside of other sort of direct inflationary cost increases, i.e. wage increases, et cetera. Which are typically in the two to four percent range that's sort of built into things. So looking at that, that two, two point six, one point five, those are in the neighborhood of ten to. Twelve, well, eight to twelve percent, I guess somewhere in that, in those ranges over those years, um, year-over-year increases. So. Uh, those are huge numbers. So just putting that out there, I think that deserved a little bit of a, of a recognition that, that there's some work to be done here. In terms of how we manage those costs, uh, going forward. So, Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to, um, I guess, Ms. Carter. Uh, thank you for this. It's, it's helpful. At least getting a good start with many of these things, um, in front of us, um, and probably we're going to need more information going forward. But just wondering, uh, the year by year is, it's nice to have it so that you can actually look at it over the five years. But if I, if I look at kind of previous budgets, if I look at, um, kind of the period between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and seventeen. The, um, contributions to surplus that came out of the, um, the revenues from our budgets. We're averaging about four million dollars. Could you explain how this would relate to what in prior years? Um, was, uh, allocated as surplus?
Ms. Carter, when you have, when you?
Certainly. So, um. It's a bit difficult to explain the surpluses. Those aren't necessarily true surpluses. Um. Typically, we've been, our surpluses have, over the last few years, have ranged around four hundred thousand if you factor in, uh. Things that need to be adjusted for the surplus. Um. Municipalities report differently than a, a normal business does. So for example, capital projects. We record the annual amortization, whereas we budget for the entire capital project. So that's one example. There's a few adjustments that have to happen there, but I can tell you that typically the last few years, we've been around four hundred thousand surplus.
And I just want to make sure that we're trying to stay on the initiatives here because we do have the budget. You know, open house piece that we're going to get dealt into things answering some of these, they're very important questions to answer for both us and for the public. But we, we are here talking about initiatives and I just want to make sure we don't get too far off on the, on the financial side of it. Just that's all.
Yeah, I guess just to clarify, I, I was thinking of if we are looking at these in this way, I just wondered if some of these items are things. That the surplus funds would have been allocated to so that if we will, if, if we'll reshift our focus using a different format going forward.
It's, it's an excellent question. I think this is really coming back to the estimates processes. I understand that, that that's where staff are bringing back all the financing options to us. Is that fair?
Certainly, and surplus dollars at the end of the year, it, it would be, at this point, we have not allocated surplus dollars. It would have to come before council in order to do that.
Okay, thank you. And I, just for the record, I had some other questions specific to parks and rec where there has been substantial. Surpluses specifically revenue versus cost, uh, if we could not possibly pull some of those, those costs towards some of the capital projects going forward as well. But. Uh, let's move on here. There's more slides to get through and I think it's important to get through those as well. Thank you.
So one of the things we want to talk to you about, um, and this is an adage that those of us in local government throw around a lot, the ninety-ten rule or the eighty-twenty rule. Um, however you put it forward, the idea is that these departments, uh, are already busy doing a lot of things. So they're working on initiatives that have previously been assigned to them, uh, in past years. Uh, there's a lot of operational, just day-to-day business. There's stuff from other levels of government we have to accommodate. So really, your new projects. Fit in that ten or tw- maybe twenty percent of the department work plan. And I think that's really important to think about going forward. Um, certainly, I know you have a team before you that, um, if you want to start putting projects, uh, before them and you're willing to give them. Uh, staff and capacity and resources, they'll tackle it. Um, but otherwise there's a gap because these departments, there's very little free board. If any, in any of these departments right now. So I just want to put that cautionary tale forward. So I'm going to use building and planning as an example, but you could build this out for any of the departments. So beyond the projects. That Bruce, uh, presented, these are the other things that are on building and planning's plate right now. Everything from, uh, secondary suites, community amenity contributions, development cost charges, heritage conservation area. They'll be assisting with the Oak Bay Lodge process, whatever that looks like, uh, energy step code implementation, cannabis, on and on it goes. So when we start to talk about initiatives and you start to make your governance decisions about what's in and what's out. You've got to remember the ninety-ten rule or you've got to give us more resources. Okay? So one of the products that we want to use moving forward is to start, uh, using department work plans. Uh, so that council actually can get a sense of, uh, what the department is working on, where we're at with your initiative. And there's no way that, that these department work plans aren't going to change in response to changing conditions. What it does is it gives us a tool to monitor ourselves internally and it also lets us have discussions with council. So again, this is just a sample work plan of what that could look like, um, but we slotted in the new initiatives in yellow. Uh, so you could see those and then you can see the other ones slotted around. Again, just a sample, but the, the concept behind it is what I really need you to focus on. So initiative selections, um, so February twenty-third, isn't it? So you're likely going to have new introductions by staff come forward after today as they continue the work of, uh, building their department budgets. Um, council direction at estimates, you might say, we're not doing that this year. We're not doing it at all. We're going to push it off to future years. So this list is not exhaustive or complete. And, uh, we're anticipating council may have some projects they want to introduce that we haven't contemplated yet. We certainly, uh, did our best kick at it based on discussions with council to date, based on the strategic priority sessions that have gone before. Uh, your priorities that you selected themselves, direction from the OCP and other guiding documents, but we're not saying we, we got them all. So if there are additional initiatives that council would like to propose, how could we do that? Um, so today I was given a, a four-hour framework in which to carry this, this meeting out. Uh, if time is permitting today, council might. Want to ballpark some of their own initiative ideas that aren't included in the discussion so far. Um, you could also, if necessary, call a special committee of the whole on February fifth, twenty-fifth, on Monday. Uh, because you're already there for a council meeting. So you could call a special committee of the whole afterwards if you wanted to ballpark your own ideas. And then if those, uh, initiatives or ideas get traction at the council level. Then staff would help you to prepare the budget sheets in the same way that they are in the binder before you. Because it's really easy to start tossing out ideas. We certainly have no shortage of good ideas. Um, but if they're going to hit the budget process, we want the same ideas of justification, rationale, analysis of risk. We want a sustainability lens on them. Those sorts of things. So, um, you guys will, uh, self-monitor and figure that out. Um, the big one I think that we need, and this is the, the interface between, uh, budget, uh, going forward. And, uh, the, the direction that finance needs, uh, do you want to see a budget with all of these ideas in? And then you're going to pull them out? Or do you want the budget with them out and you're going to start slotting them in? So I'm going to hand this over to Deb, to you. Uh, Debbie to talk a little bit about this, and then she's really going to need some council direction.
Thanks, Lou. So through our budget process, we will come forward with a draft budget as we have done in the past for council consideration. It really is up to council whether you would like the initiative shown in the draft budget or not and add them in. We can. We can work either way as long as we have some direction in which way, uh, will work best for council. And, um. When we go through the estimates, uh, process, uh, for example, some of you may recall that on the last day of estimates, we have a spreadsheet showing up on the screen. That allows us to make changes on the fly and show what the impacts would be. So that's one option. Or we could put it in, um. The, the very first, so you have it at the very first estimates meeting. Um, so it's really council's discretion.
Do you want to answer right now? I'm not sure how council feels, but my personal preference would be that we have all the information included and we take things out. I think it's, it's hard to on the fly kind of add up. And I think also it'd be very important for us to have the. You know, with that big number, there's some pretty big numbers, you know, but what does it look like? Like how much of that could be drawn off by grants or by reserves or by spreading some of those out? Uh, through other, other loans, borrowing or, or using reserves, paying them back over time sort of model. So I think. I think we, my, my preference would be to include them at the beginning and then we pull them out if that's. Okay, we seem to have nodding going on, but Counselor Appleton, maybe not.
No, not necessarily contradicting, but just a quick question related to this. How would, in terms of how we present. Uh, the information to the public at the budget open house, um, how does the decision that we make on, at, on this topic inform? How staff would proceed with that public outreach?
It's an excellent question. Um, Ms. Carter?
Sure, it's a good question. So, um, what we would do if council directs that you would like all of the initiatives included, we would do our best to. we would do our best to show, based on staff's recommendation, what funding source could, could be used for those projects. Obviously, it's, it would be very much in draft form for council consideration and tossing around at estimates. So, we would have to be very clear at the public open house that this is just the very first draft, and council will be going through it in more detail through the estimates process.
Mr. Jones, you had some suggestion?
Not a suggestion, it's a comment, and I'm probably going to state the obvious. What, uh, doing that, I mean, it's up to council, obviously, but just be aware that what we will be presenting and will be captured in the community and by the media will be a budget that we're bringing forward to council with an increase of 15% or something like that. And that, that's, that's what the community is going to see. We'll have to be very careful in how we communicate that. But we can only do our best to communicate that, and can't say how that's going to be relayed in the community. Just want council to be very aware of that.
Fair enough. And I would just say, I think it's important for us to categorize where some of these costs are as we, as we bring that forward. So, in terms of the infrastructure pieces, the other pieces, these are, you're right. If that, if we do move forward with that, that's going to be an important part. Councilor Zelka, then Councilor Patterson?
Thank you very much. I, I do have a number of questions that I'll, hopefully I'll be able to disgorged at some point, but I'll just keep it, one comment with respect to, to this new initiatives in or out. I appreciate the, the question being asked. And, and for me, this is a real indication, another indication of a difference between this council versus previous councils. And the previous councils, there seemed to be a public perception, as I noticed before I became a councillor, and even as I became a councillor, to withhold information. I know everyone here is dancing as fast as you bloody well can, and I really appreciate that. But I didn't get any of this information until last night. And the public still hasn't received this information. So, by providing all of the information right up front, and, and maybe there being a bit of a scare, a possible public relations thing we'll have to work on. I mean, we're going to get training on public relations at some point, and, and the whole media messaging. And, and we have a new mayor who's already expert at, at messaging things. So, I'm not actually too worried about that. Because by the time we get to the point where we're actually have that, that, that tax information in someone's hands, they'll see, when the rubber hits the proverbial road, that how much we used from, from, from reserves, and how much we were able to shift around, and how much of these new initiatives from staff, and the new initiatives you haven't even heard about yet that are going to come from council, how much we've had to actually pull out for, for practical purposes. So, thank you for the suggestion, and I certainly hope my council colleagues will, will be very much in favor of everyone, of, of all the initiatives being in, so that we're very transparent on, on, on what we're thinking of. Thank you.
Councilor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, to a few members of the staff, I guess. My thoughts on this are, first of all, this is, this is an improvement over past years. I mean, it, it's still a bit of a rough start, but at least we, we are trying to use the, the, all of the experience and knowledge sitting around the table, and it's extensive, to at least solidify the five-year plan. And, and that's at least a good first step on the longer-term plan. I think, though, in messaging to the community, and I will echo what Councilor Zelka has said, is that I, I understand the concerns about, wow, this is going, this is going to show a massive need, an increase on, on taxes. But I, I think we will have to explain it, I mean, in going to, what are core services? What are capital projects? And going back to the consultant reports, that Councilor Zelka has got them here, that it said on a 20-year requirement. Because if you look at those, and then you see we're breaking off sections, I think what we're, we are saying is that we are fully acknowledging that there has been many years of deferred maintenance and capital projects and many things. This is the total of it. This is the first segment of it, this solidifying the five years, but breaking off the, the core services from the capital projects, so that we can, you know, we can identify those. We are obviously going to have to make some difficult choices. So, we're going to need, I think as members of council, we're going to need more information about the real, all of these are good ideas. They're all, I think we will all agree that they're, they're welcome suggestions, and they're needed. But realistically, when, when we come down to trying to find the funding, that will tell the story of what we can accomplish. But at least they're captured, and we won't lose them anymore. We won't be deferring them into the Netherlands of, of, they're never coming back again, and we don't know what we have. So, you know, this is good, but I think if we could do the core, and then the capital, but the, still that overall magnitude of what's in those reports. So, this is what's facing us. So, we start to link maybe our report card of where do we stand right now on these things? And if we're at an F, we're at an F, but how do we get to a D and a C? And it's not going to come fast, but at least if we show that outline, it'll, it, it, it won't relieve all of the stress, but it might tell the story a little bit better.
I'm glad you were never my teacher, Councilor Patterson. Councilor Green?
Through you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank all of you, because this, this is really comprehensive information that has been incredibly helpful to me this morning. And maybe I'm happier than some, because half of my new initiatives are reflected in, in the documents. So, thank you for that. This is the first time, to my knowledge, that we've had an opportunity to see the municipality and the priorities in this way. So, I think this is so incredibly helpful, and it's laid out very well, too. So, I, I would say, I commend this initiative. It's the first time that I'm aware of in Oak Bay that we've, we've done something like this. And I did serve in another community, and, you know, again, this is a, a great model, and I haven't seen it before, and, and it's, it's, it's helpful. Yes, we have challenges ahead of us. I don't think that will be news to our community, frankly. I think the community is aware that, that we do have a number of financial challenges, and a number of maintenance challenges, and, and other challenges going forward. And I agree that our human resource challenge and capacity are, are really important, and we must remember those. But I, what I like about this is that you have touched on every, every concern or every question I've had in, in each area. So, I think that we can work with this material, and I also think that we can, we can get past the, you know, the perception in, in the community that taxes are going to go up 25%. I, I think people realize that this is going to take time. And I guess that would be my message to everybody, is I know expectations are high, and people get impatient, but the fact is, this kind of fundamental change takes time. And, you know, I think we need to understand that. And it, I think it's, each of us has a responsibility to, to communicate that in, in our, our daily work in the community, that it, it does take time. But this is an earnest group of people, both staff and council, that really want to make positive change. That would be my message to the community.
I, I'm just, we have a question in front of us, so I'm, as long as we're all in agreement in terms, no, it's okay, I don't need a motion just yet. I just, that's more important, because I think we can deal with the messaging piece as we go forward. I just, it was really, do we include them, and then do it, doing a taking out piece? I'm getting a sense of yes, so I just...
Yes.
And Councilor Breatwait?
Thanks, I'll be really quick. Yeah, it took us a long time to get to this position. It's going to take us a little while to get out of it. To Mr. Jones's point, I guess, I think that the public would be probably in shock to see a number of around 15% associated with our budget. However, I think if we do do it in the correct way, and we do present it in the correct way, when we then come back and say, maybe the increase is only going to be 7%, then we're all going to look like heroes, so it'll be perfect. So, thank you.
Well, I, maybe that's true, maybe not, I'm not sure. Do you want a motion from this table, just to say, bring back the, that, or is, is the discussion sufficient for staff? Okay, good. It doesn't change the decision-making, it just changes the way that's presented, so I appreciate that. You still have a couple more slides, and you have all of 45 seconds to finish now.
Great.
If we stay on time.
Okay. So, next steps leading up to the deadline. So, we have the budget open house, March 28th. Staff will be working on the content and the way the information is presented. We have the three estimates meetings, April 3rd, 10th, and 17th. Hopefully, today's discussion and having the information presented in advance of those meetings is useful to you. So, let's talk deadlines really quickly. By May 6th, we need three readings of three bylaws: tax rates bylaw, boulevard frontage bylaw, and the five-year financial plan. May 14th, we'll be looking for final adoption of those bylaws. June 28th, we need the annual report available to the public. So, we've got some work to do. I guess the, the message before we break for, for lunch, Your Worship, is to say, we hope this has helped you in getting ready for the estimates meetings, with giving you adequate time to consider the initiatives and formulate questions for directors prior to April. So, when Councilor Zelka talked about just receiving this information last night, he's absolutely correct. But my personal style is this, is how I like to provide information to council. I don't want to just drop a report in your lap and run. I think it's much more meaningful to provide you with the report, let you talk with the, the experts that you have at hand, and that's how we present information going forward. So, it's, it's a very different tone. It isn't that idea of we're giving you information last minute. In fact, this is in advance of the estimates meeting, so it's really front-loading the process and giving you lots of time. So, I, I hope you appreciate the effort, and thank you again to staff. And we'll be available for public and council inquiries after the break.
So, just housekeeping, we have 15 minutes, gosh, and now 13 minutes, to have a bite to eat. Then we're all back at this table, and, and we will have some more discussion and pieces coming forward. Can you do me a favor, just back up two slides? So, I might as well just deal with this right now. The other option that you mentioned earlier was, can we add a committee of the whole after the council meeting tomorrow night? Oh, sorry, Monday night. It's almost tomorrow. Monday night, to, for any of us to bring forward other additional ideas to, to have a contained discussion about other new initiatives. I think it's important to do it early, so we have that timeline. So, I guess I'm just going to look around this table here, are people comfortable? Have everybody seen the agenda on Monday? It's a fairly light agenda, so we will have some time. Well, Councilor Day, are you okay with that as well? It would just be after the council meeting. We, we have a very short agenda on, on Monday night. We're council, so we're just looking at, at creating, adding an hour afterwards to bring forward some. Okay, okay. Thank you, then. So, we'll do that. If we can just make sure, make the announcement, in, in adequate time for our, our notification requirements. And with that, we'll call a break. Now, will the, will the live streaming go off at the time of the, it will not. So, this will continue to stream. People get to watch us eat, if they want to stay in the room. Post at 12:40, sorry, 12:50, I've got my time here, 12:50-ish, we'll come back in here, and then we're going to have more discussion for, until 2 o'clock. You've got eight minutes for lunch. This is perfect. Thank you, everybody. If I can just invite people to sit down, we're gonna get going here. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Miss, I need councilors and Ms. Carter and everybody to come back. I think we're all good. We have just a little, not enough time, I grant you, but some time to have some discussion. I think if we all go through all of our questions, we're probably gonna get to a point of midnight, and we don't want to do that. I would like to wrap this up at 2 o'clock, and I would like to give the public some chance to come forward and say a few things. So recognizing it's pretty hard to get much in here in about, say, a half-hour time for council to go through, I might ask, maybe just go around the table and just capture if there's some, if you have questions on any of these or just comments. We can allocate, I guess we could allocate five minutes each, so that's really not a lot, just to go around and raise the pieces. And we don't have to answer them all here necessarily, but we can at least capture those for future conversation. And what we might, if I might, can we, Ms. Hopkins, I guess, can we, if we can capture the questions and the comments going around the table, then we can make sure we'll make an effort to have those answers if they're not readily available today in the timeframe that we get to those in future, and we'll do the same thing with the public input. Is that, that's a reasonable... Okay. So I always start with Counselor Appleton, so am I okay to go this way this time to Counselor Zelka? So I think you might have missed the first part of that. So just to say, if we can get five minutes, if you just, maybe just give your questions and comments within that sort of five-minute window, we'll go around, and we'll get some time for the public to make some comments as well. And we'll try and get the answers, the questions answered. So if you have two questions, we'll get them answered. If there's 10, we'll probably capture them and get them out, the answers out a little bit later.
I hear you mayor wanting to move things along. I appreciate that. However, at the last break, every other counselor had a chance to speak, but I did not, so in terms of asking questions. So I would indulge on you on having maybe a bit more than five minutes if it comes to that.
I'll try. If we can do five minutes, then we'll come back, is maybe the simplest thing to do.
Excellent. So I need some clarifications, if I may, first, please.
Please.
With respect to what else is on our plate, which might be for the CAO. It talks about sea level rise. Is that relating to something about NDMP funding, possibly? I'd like to learn a bit more about that, very briefly. Also, the regional context statement, apparently there's some work happening in that area. I'm just curious as to why we would have work on those areas happening right now. I don't need information answered today, but certainly if we're gonna have our committee of the whole on Monday, we'd love to hear more about that in terms of...
Okay, I'm just gonna, so procedurally, Monday, I'm gonna try and keep the focus on new initiatives and pieces. So if there's something there that maybe that would come back and say, oh, we're already doing that, so that's possible. But Ms. Rell, can you have a short answer for those two?
So that would be a larger discussion with the department, for sure, for greater understanding on those initiatives. Those are just samples at this time. Really, the point wasn't to discuss the items down the side. It was really to show you a sample work plan that we'll bring back to you. So certainly, at a future time, the directors could provide that information, but it is outside of the particular scope of the initiatives before you. It was really to say, just moving forward, we want to provide you with a sample work plan that meshes what is on the department's plate with the initiatives that you select, and then how those are refined going forward.
Absolutely. I'm not talking about new initiatives. I'm talking about what is on your plate today with respect to sea level rise. What is on the plate today with respect to sea level rise? I've never heard anything about this, other than the possibility of grants.
Ms. Jensen?
Through you, Chair, you may recall that last year, council approved $25,000 for staff to work with a consultant to go out and do mapping along the Oak Bay shoreline, so we had a better understanding of exactly where that boundary is where sea level rise was going to impact us. Since that time, we have been able to work with the CRD and other impacted municipalities in the area. A grant has been put forward to NDMP to try and get some funds from them that would actually target the study around the entire area, so that we're all working with the same information.
And I presume that's NDMP funding.
And we are waiting for an answer from them.
Excellent. Wonderful. A last sort of clarification question has to do with, actually, this screen as well, the top line. I noticed that the timeframe for secondary suites has a remarkable overlap with the timeframe for various other initiatives having to do with housing needs report, infill, and village plans. So while looking for possible funding for, a grant funding for the housing needs from external, I presume staff would need a motion from council if we were potentially to reapply the existing funding or whatever's left of the existing funding for secondary suites and put that into a larger pot that would be addressed by the lines three, four, and five, and deleting line one. I just wanted to confirm, I presume that we would need a motion from council for that.
I think procedurally, just asking, we have a secondary suite study underway. We're also gonna be doing other housing and looking at other housing needs and that thing. So if there was a desire by council to merge the two, that would require a motion essentially to put those two together under one sort of larger project. Is that, I think that's the question at hand. The alternate, Ms. Rella, is probably the, procedurally, the most... Oh, and you got a mouthful, sorry.
Your worship, I'll try that. That is correct. So we, council has approved funding for the secondary suite study. That is underway. So if you wanted to change course in that, we would need some kind of direction from council.
Okay, thank you.
If I could jump into my questions now, please. And feel free to just take a list. I don't need an answer today. But I'll zoom through them. The Wi-Fi upgrades for Parks and Rec. I know we have a, I believe we've signed contracts with Shaw and, I believe, with Telus as well, with respect to their using our lampposts for various things, and there was supposed to be a win-win aspect to that, which I'm sure has already been made the Wi-Fi service available for free here to some extent. I would hope that service contract could help maybe with this initiative, and I'm, as a telecom engineer, I'm willing to assist with that at the discretion of the mayor. So I just put that out there in terms of any potential going hat in hand to Telus and Shaw to keep the cost down in this area. The elimination of the one-guard pool shift. Would this eliminate the extra billing that occurs, I think, after 11:00 PM? I think, if I remember correctly, at late hours, we, there's an additional charge for those who want to swim late. I presume this extra shift has to do with that late shift, and again, the answer could be later.
It's probably an easy answer.
Yeah, through the chair, actually, it's not late night. It's more, we've eliminated the early mornings. They're all daytime shifts now.
Wonderful. So there wouldn't be, sorry, I missed that. Extra billing? No, yes, no?
The one-guard issue is not, does not take place in the evenings.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. So it's independent. The arena chiller, I, it has to be done. I'm very much in favor of it going forward. However, like Fernie, is there any consideration for replacing the ammonia with the synthetic Freon gas as the approach they went through? I know it's more expensive, but it is safe, and it also eliminates a lot of other dangers to our staff. And if it's a bit more, we, I'd be open to looking at something that would be safer for our staff.
Through the chair, there are differences of opinion around that. Actually, there are some people in the refrigeration industry that feel that ammonia is one of the safest refrigerants out there because it smells, and Freon doesn't. So when you walk into a room, you know whether you have an ammonia leak or not. So certainly, we're trying to ensure that we are dealing with the latest and greatest best practices and technology. We can investigate that, but, I mean, that would be, that's just a chiller. That's just one element of a refrigeration system. There's compressors, condensers.
Absolutely.
All the rest of it. So that's a recommendation from our contractor at this point.
It's a great recommendation. I wouldn't want to be proposing any particular gas, but certainly, I hopefully that they've, they and you have considered similar replacements or similar, not necessarily Freon, but something that might be safer. And if you've already addressed it, great. If I may go on?
Please.
The Bowker Trail Path Sidewalk Plan that touches on the Bowker aspect. I notice, I note on mid-April that the Oak Bay High portion of Bowker is transferring from CRD responsibility over to the school board officially, and yay, that's great of all the work that they've done. And I'm sure the CRD may be making some impacts, this is a tie-in here, with engineering in terms of trying to help with that handover piece. However, relating specifically to this, to the sidewalk trail plan, you know, TBD, I know there's a lot of interest in this area, not only along the Bowker area, but also, for example, maybe there might be opportunities with relating to the uplands combined sewer separation aspect, since we are basically digging up that whole area in terms of what's gonna replace it afterwards, especially a lot of areas that currently are, have a lot of shrubbery and stuff where there's right of way there, but it's impassable. I note in Victoria that where they're putting in large sewer pipes out to the, replacing the outfall, they're putting trails on top of where the pipe used to be, and I'm wondering if there would be consideration in later years for what's gonna go on top of the upland sewer separation relating to our sidewalk plan that can tie in with Parks and Rec. I just wanted to simply put that out there and ask that it be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate this is very tight to try and get five minutes into these things, because you're at eight minutes and counting, just to put it out there, how fast this is.
Eight minutes, okay. Playground master plan. Willow's needs a new bathroom. Hopefully, that's been tied in. All right, so last thing on Parks and Rec and culture is, I noticed item three, which is endangered species, is behind or after review and update dog use policies. In my humble opinion, endangered species should be ahead of dog use. I don't know whether that would make sense, but maybe we can vote on that later. Thank you very much. Finance, new initiatives. Shall I zoom, zoom, zoom?
Yeah, that'd be great. Zoom, zoom.
Zoom. The, I'm very much appreciative of all the work that's being done ahead, as, you know, you have some techies here on staff, on council. The network switch replacement and the Microsoft 365 update. My goodness, this whole thing about phone and internet being combined into one, like the provincial government has gone to voice-over IP, relying on Office 365 to provide the phone service. We don't have telephone switches anymore. So that might be a consideration through a consultant to look at, to, as a way of saving some cost. And I was pleased to hear that the online, public-facing aspect of Tempest is being updated. I didn't know we had an online, public-facing aspect of Tempest. I'm looking forward to seeing it. Thank you very much. The, continuing with corporate services, records management, public engagement, FOI. Obviously, they all work together, and as we implement more and more of our mayor's task force, and we release all of this information to the public, which I hope we release all of this information to the public at the committee of the whole on Monday. at the committee of the whole on Monday. When I say all, I mean, all of this gets released on Monday, uh, for, for, uh, continuing to discuss what the details are. That may actually reduce the need for F O I and, uh, uh, which, which may reduce other things. It may open up other questions. But, um, but I would hope that as we implement more of the mayor's task force with respect to policy changes, not necessarily, uh, uh, system changes, that, um, that we will continue, uh, moving forward in that area. Thank you very much. On that one, uh, yes, zooming through. Public Works and Engagement, um, the district's support of the C R D, that's again the Bowker Creek aspect. Okay, Building and Planning, um, very pleased to see, uh, some of the work being done in that area and hopefully the, um, the additional grant from, or monies could be shifted over if we agree as a council. Yes, um, uh, Heritage Con, Conversions, I presume on the infill housing, all that, with the engagement, that would be tied in with heritage to some extent to make sure that, uh, we can continue to support our heritage, uh, uh, infrastructure on missing middle. And I think that's it. Looking forward to some responses at an appropriate time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Zelka. And thank you for being, uh, doing that. I appreciate this is a, a restriction of this, of this format, but we'll, we'll try and get through this and, and come back. Uh, Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and in the interest of brevity, and also because Councilor Zelka asked all of the questions before me, I've, I've only got a couple. One, uh, this is under Corporate Services and Administration because it's got commissions and committees review. Uh, there's nothing allocated for that. And I think that that is a really important task that needs to be, um, completed, uh, to, to get, to make, uh, the committees and the commissions that we have, uh, to increase efficiency and effectiveness because certainly as we go through, um, the housing plan and, and some of these things, I think that their expertise and guidance is going to be really critical to us. So, um, and, and then that loops back a little bit into resources because that's not really captured in here. But do we have the resources so that we can get to that too? And, and you don't have to answer that right now. That can be, we can leave it till Monday or whatever. And then the only other, um, I, thing that I was wondering about, um, for the, for the building and planning, uh, the monies being allocated for the zoning bylaw, um, uh, redrafting. Just wondering if those, if the monies that are allocated, um, is that to bring in, to add to resources to get the bylaw drafted, or what, what is the money for?
Maybe we can answer that quickly?
Quick answer is yes.
Then that's very brief. I'm finished.
Councilor Neay?
I just have, um, well, a couple of questions coming out of, uh, Building and Planning. So I, I'm just curious about, um, how this gets played out. But it, I, I, my question has to do if, what the possibilities are as, as we've got things budgeted here. So, um, we, we've got the, uh, in, infill housing and the village area plans each budgeted out in two consecutive years. And I have a sense, I, I'm, my que, underlying my question has to do with completion and implementation. That's really what I'm asking. So in the sample, um, uh, implementation, um, uh, you have for, under initiatives, it looks like when you implement the infill housing and the village plans, they can happen at the same time. That's what it looks like to me. And I, I appreciate this is just a, um, you know, a sample. But so that makes sense to me that, that both those two initiatives could happen simultaneously, if I've understood that. But my question has to do with, uh, implementation. So we've got the, the zoning bylaw review in the next two consecutive years. So here, here's the question too, is can the zoning bylaw happen at the same time as the, as the engagement and implementation of infill and village area plans? Or does it have to follow after that work? And underlying all that has to do, can we pull it up, that, that, and expedite that piece of work? So that's the question.
Yeah, if, if I may, uh, I don't want to have to move to the other slide, but I think either slide is a little bit more helpful in terms of sequencing. But to, to go back to when, uh, these occur, the, the, there's some logic to what's presented there. But the comprehensive zoning bylaw update is a fairly significant piece of work. It may be implementing some of the outcomes of housing. So you, you know, you, you'd want to have it in such a way that you had at least some of the results from your, your housing to feed into your comprehensive zoning bylaw update. But that doesn't mean you can't, um, port that back into an earlier timeframe and, and commence that. Just understand that each of those initiatives are quite significant. And so they're, they're, they're staggered in the, yes, thank you, in the, in the slide that you see on the screen, uh, to reflect that you can get going on one and start another one. I've, I've got in the budget sheets actually the, the proposal for, for when these would, would start in terms of the quarters. And the idea is that there can be some concurrency, but you're commencing housing review first. I think that, that's kind of an obvious one to set the stage for the other work. But, but then the others can be commenced at, at different points in time, and they can be occurring simultaneously. It's just a matter, if I may, to go back to, of managing, uh, the significance of, of these initiatives. And when they're occurring simultaneously, that, that would represent some challenges for us. So we have to be careful on that.
Just a, a follow-up to that, I mean, Mr. Mayor, um, so it, it, if, if I just think of, for example, if we're trying to, when will we see the ability for somebody to come in and apply for, say, a duplex zoning? Like, would that happen in twenty twenty-three, or would we see that begin to happen in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? That, yeah.
So, uh, the discussion around that would, would be an outcome of the infill housing initiative that's on, on the screen. And there will be some implementation directions presuming that come out of, out of that work. One of which would be, for example, amend the zoning bylaw to, uh, allow for duplexes in certain zones, as an example. And so you could undertake that without doing your comprehensive zoning bylaw update.
Thank you very much.
All right, Councilor Green?
Yes, thank you. Um, well, first of all, just for the purposes of my own, the way my mind works, I looked at these in terms of risk management, public health and safety and sustainability. And, um, that was a helpful way to look at it. So I don't really have a lot of questions, but just a couple. For, uh, engineering, Mr. Horen, through you, Mayor, um, on the L E D lights, I think the savings are excellent. Have, have you had any complaints about at night the glare? And the reason I ask is that, uh, apparently there are covers available, and I've heard a number of people, and perhaps it's an older demographic, but they are really, really bright at night and make driving and other things, um, somewhat challenging. So that was just a question on, on covers.
I, I can give a quick answer if it's appropriate. So there are, the, for those individuals, just call Public Works, and we can get what's called a shade. Um, in fact, uh, so I live in Victoria and I asked for the same thing because the light's right across the street, shines right into the bedroom. Uh, so the complaints are higher, uh, when the new lights are installed and then, because, because they do, even just the, the different kind of light, it appears a lot brighter than it really is. So it's really shocking when you first see it. But then, uh, as time goes on, uh, we do get some, some requests to, uh, to add the shades. But typically, uh, um, the, yeah, generally, uh, the, the complaints die down once the, once people get used to them.
Thank you very much. On the committee and commission review process, I agree with, um, others that I think this is something that, that we should try and expedite because a number of our, our commissions and committees, you know, volunteers have questions. They're wondering what, what's going to happen in the future. And this is, I think, a really important project because they are actually human resources that support our work generally. So I think it's really important that we, we proceed quickly with that review. And then, um, my other question was, um, from Building and Planning, and I also echo Councilor Neay's comments and I think others' comments that I hope that we can expedite the comprehensive zoning bylaw review because I, I do believe that's, that's critical and has been something that I actually admire your ability to work with the zoning bylaw we have under the circumstances. So I, I would think it would be a great tool, new tool for you as well as a planning department, as it will be for the community. And just a suggestion on infill housing. I, I wa, I was wondering if you would consider adding the word options, infill housing options for neighborhoods. And the reason I suggest that is that, that the word infill is a rather loaded term, uh, it seems in Oak Bay. So I think the important piece there are infill housing options for neighborhoods. So I think if it's clarified that way, that the reaction might be less strident, shall we say? And I think, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Brithewith?
Thank you. A lot of my questions have already been asked. Um, I will talk a little bit about, um, through you, Chair, about, uh, the carpeting and painting. We seem to have a lot of departments and areas that are looking at carpeting, painting. Because obviously, when you just look around this building here, we have put that on the back burner for, well, looking at the color scheme, I would say probably forty years. Um, so I think it's really important that we, that we do get that fixed. And, and also, especially for, um, in the hall, I know there's a lot of, um, areas where it's, it is really a hazard. So that's really important. But I think, um, if, if we can look at it in economies of scale for basically sharing on that, if we're getting carpeting for this building and for the, for the rec center, can we not try and do it as a more of a bulk buy or the same with the painting or something like that? So that would be one thing. And it would be the same for the Wi-Fi as well, because I know we had Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi in a couple of different areas, and I'm wondering if there's something that can be shared, uh, as far as that goes. And, uh, just a comment, I think, oh, a, a couple of things in, in Parks, Rec and Culture. The shelter, um, I'm wondering if perhaps we can, um, the shelter for Can, uh, Canarvan Park. I'm wondering if perhaps we can perhaps approach Rotary and Kiwanis and to see if that might be something that they might like to take on. Um, so, um, that, um, I know we have a Kiwanian sitting around the table over there, um, that might like to take that to Kiwanis as well. I know they have other, their, their money earmarked for other things, but it might be something that, that's like a, a tangible thing that they might be able to come together and, um, and put the money towards. And then, uh, as far as the roofs go, uh, we talked a little bit about, or someone made a comment about other energy sources around roof, roofs. Um, and I think that, uh, Mr. Herman, we already have solar panels on the, or we're getting solar panels for the, the, um, the roof of the rec center. Is that correct?
Uh, through the chair, we have existing solar panels, have had for many years. They're actually getting kind of old and old technology. Uh, our energy coordinator, Mr. Wilson, is, uh, has got a proposal for some upgrades there. And, uh, one of the grant opportunities I need to investigate might address that.
Good. Thank you very much. Um, and I think that's, I'll leave it at that. So that's, Councilor Appleton has some time.
Councilor Appleton, you have some time.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Councilor Brithewith. I will try to keep my, my comments sort of overview style rather than a bunch of fine-grained questions. But I, I did want to, uh, recognize the elements that are included, especially under Corporate Services, uh, for public engagement, uh, website upgrades, uh, the outward-facing communications pieces that we really need to sort of communicate, both the challenges that we're experiencing through the budgeting process and also some of the great initiatives that we're putting out there. So I was very pleased, uh, to see those elements included, uh, in these, in these budgets because I think that that's really key. I, just a couple of quick comments, uh, just in terms of, uh, a quick question to, uh, Mr. Herman from Parks and, uh, with regards to the Anderson Hill kiosk, I, I was approached, uh, by some folks, I think, who were volunteering and had been, uh, speaking to Mr. Hyde Lay about contributing some, uh, volunteer experience and, or, uh, some contributions that would also go into that kiosk. So, or, is, is, is it sort of implicit in this budget line item that we're also going to sort of get some in-kind support and help from members of the community on that?
Uh, through the chair, that would be consistent with the other kiosk processes that have been undertaken recently.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, one quick question for Corporate Services. In terms of the records management piece, which I know is extensive, and there's sort of, uh, as, as you mentioned, there are some, uh, sort of, uh, essentially key mission-critical elements and then some broader elements as well. Because it is a big, uh, budget piece, I'm just wondering whether there could sort of be some granularity in that as to sort of the things which are the absolute, you know, mission-critical things for privacy, security, et cetera, and then the other components on that. If we're sort of struggling with the budget number, how can we sort of tease out some of the elements of that? Just a, a, a broad ask.
Through the chair, um, so one of the, the pieces with that records management request is that this is not something that staff will be able to, to tackle by themselves. And so that initial request will have, uh, some implications for, um, securing some consultant services. And some of the critical, uh, something to consider is that, um, our current system is definitely in need of a refresh, and there would be some budget savings further down the line when we are, are able to go through the records that we're storing off-site and have determined that we don't actually need to be retaining those. This would be your first phase of records management and is really focusing on the paper records. There would be additional asks much later on, getting into digital records. And, um, I think that's on your budget sheet too, uh, looking at, you know, an audit of our critical records in the face of emergency. And improving our onsite storage to ensure that we've got, um, a safe place for retention and for, um, document, um, preservation.
Thanks. Uh, just two very quick items after this. Just with regards to the, uh, I, I would be remiss if I didn't make a comment about the, uh, Oak Bay Rec Center parking lot in just terms of, uh, the repaving and, and options for that, that structure. Just given where it's located, um, you know, and, and I will admit to not knowing all of the engineering details required to make it happen, but given where it's located in close proximity to Bowker Creek and our commitment to sort of achieving better environmental results for Bowker Creek, I'd like to see, uh, potentially resurfacing of that parking lot. Consider, uh, something permeable or incorporating, uh, stormwater management such that the runoff from that lot is going to be, uh, more, is, is, is just going to be in better condition when it hits Bowker Creek. Because it's such, it's, it's so close in to the actual creek itself that you could positively influence that creek quite a lot by reconstructing or when you have a chance to redo that parking lot. So just a, a broad comment. And just finally, um, I'll echo some comments that have been made around the table already, which is, you know, the materials which have been given to us today are, are really fantastic. They're, they're easily accessible. Uh, they're, they're broadly understandable by just about anybody who would pick them up. For that reason, in advance of the budget open house, I would really like to see all the materials put out there onto the website and promoted really heavily such that people engage with those materials, uh, before they come to the open house. I'm sure staff are going to do a fantastic job in preparing materials for the public to view at the open house, obviously. But anything that we can do to, uh, publish and promote and, and, uh, make the public aware of where and how they can get a hold of these materials, I think is, is just a really key item. So, uh, even beyond, I, I know that they're going to go up as an, a probably amended agenda materials under this meeting on the website. You know, I, I would even like to see some dedicated webpage content, a, a dedicated sub-page that, that specifically deals with these materials and, and pointing people towards them.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, Councilor Green, you had one, something else to add?
Not to add, just a suggestion. In, in preparation, you've reminded me for, for the next budget open house, perhaps a summary of this meeting would be useful as well as part of that package when it's promoted and advertised, just a, just an overall summary of, of this meeting. Because that would, that would help update those that were unable to attend or couldn't watch it on the web. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, well, just, I'll start by just thanking all the staff for putting this together. I, I was in the office a lot the last couple of weeks, and I saw the scrambling around and the drafting of these and the, and the massive amount of effort put in to try and to undertake this. And to be able to have it all sort of conjoined and onto these sort of slides is, is very helpful. It's, I think we can all acknowledge it's not perfect yet. It is fan, so much nicer to have these conversations at this kind of table than it is trying to, after going through three days of exhaustive, uh, estimates process and then trying to discuss capital projects. So thank you so much for all that. I, I have a series of, of comments and questions, and I'll just, I'll, I'll go through them quickly. Overarching, uh, one thing that really came through with me on this was the, the absolute need, given the general maintenance requirements of our buildings and the, just, I look at this, I think it's, it's, if not this year, the next year, we really should look at, much like we're doing with the infrastructure. We don't know how much exactly we have to pay, but I think we have to start a, a facilities reserve fund model so that we're even, long-term, it's covering the maintenance costs, the replacement costs of carpets, painting, roof replacement in the long scheme, those pieces, we're just. We just, it doesn't matter how much that exact number is, but I think we're going to have to start putting some money aside into that. So we want to look at that as a, just as a financial framework. And it's something similar. So on the railings, I think there's a number of very poor-shaped railings around our community. And we may just need to look again, what is the overarching cost of that? What's the lifespan and what does that break down to on a, on a long term and just actually put those those funds away over time? Because we're going to be facing a lot of rail replacements coming up. Again, the the question, some of those big capital for Parks and Rec, specifically the chiller piece, I think that's something we really should be looking at, you know, grants, but also we have had surpluses specifically in that department that maybe we could pull out of. I'd also look at the parking there. And really, we have to consider that, that $300,000 in the context that we're struggling with the $600,000 we're putting into all the roads in Oak Bay. I'm okay with that as a project, so long as it's being really vetted in the bigger picture, because there's so many areas that we have, that slide that is that really the top priority. The playground question, I think, is a really good one. And I think I break it into two halves. One, there's a strategic portion of it, but there's also a, I noticed that in the last Parks and Rec and Culture Commission, they talked about setting up a fundraising group to maybe start fundraising for some of these playgrounds. And I think it would be worthwhile for us as a council to support if they want, if we can actually tackle getting one or two playgrounds, you know, done as a priority in the next couple of years while that strategic piece is going, that might be a good way of also just getting some real-world experience of what really works and what we might be able to do and get costs and stuff. The, I noticed that in the Finance Department, almost everything is in 2019. So I'm sort of curious, again, from a prioritization perspective. And I guess bigger question is, are we make sure that when we're making investments, whether it's budget software, ADP, or other pieces, that they really are part of a comprehensive financial package that work together, talk together, that we're not going to be stuck in kind of, again, an out-of-sink model. And I know you're thinking of all that, but I'm just going to say it out loud as well. And part of that reserve pieces, there's also the IT and some of those IT projects and, you know, this putting money for three years for switches, but those switches have a five-to-eight-year lifespan, as long as many other IT pieces have, you know, we should probably be, again, setting money aside, just so it's very clear when we're spending these funds that we're, we are setting aside X dollars for IT. And I guess part of the expectation of this process, when we have these big scary numbers and we're going to look at approving some of them, the Microsoft 365 is a really good example to me. That, that model is an excellent one, but part of the reason it works so well is it drives down the cost of servers, of software licenses, of maintenance and all those pieces. So when looking at additional costs, which seemed to be what we're talking about here, there should be some ancillary savings, frankly, on some of the other pieces. And if we're going to look at these, we really have to be ensuring as the oversight body that those costs are coming down in in respect. The, this is a little one, I'm just throwing it out there. If we're putting a network port in there, it has to be very secured, because that's one of the best ways as a, my security world knowledge, that people just come in and plug in. If they're on the network, there's almost nothing you can do to stop them from poking around. So physically, that's just a big issue. The, I'm going to just endorse what Councilor Green said. I would love to see if we can find some way, and it'll come up in new issues, new things next week or on Monday. But the whole idea of having recycling, composting and garbage within our public waste receptacles, if there's any way we can get there, I think it's it's time. And the, want to just also just confirm whether or not the LED light upgrades, are those going into the uplands as well, like with the with the standard stonions they have in there? No, not being included in that. And I'd just also touch on the fact that I think that the, we just make sure in our process that we're moving that housing needs forward in our budgeting process so that we can get it started, so that we're not falling behind on that quarter-over-quarter process. Phew, there we go. Zoom, zoom. That, there, see, we've got, we've got time for public input now. Is there anything else anybody else came up with or thought of in that time, Councilor Zelka?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the the chance to speak again. First of all, a question about process. For the new initiatives that we would like to add to this, coming from our side of the the table, but this, I assume that the intention for that, it will be on Monday.
Yeah, so just to be absolutely clear, so I'll look around at all the members of council, on Monday, please bring ideas you might have, specifically for 2019, but it could be over the four-year, other initiatives that we want to tackle.
And then the last question is, one item I didn't see on what else is on our plate has to do with childcare. I know that we've just gone in, to some extent, on a grant aspect with Sanich, I believe Victoria as well. And I didn't see that showing up on any anyone's plans. I presume there'll be a 2019, 2020 aspect of that. I do see other players in Oak Bay who are already acting on that and affecting the community, such as school districts. I was wondering if we wanted to just touch upon that or at least maybe bring it forward on Monday.
Well, what we can do, Mr. Herman, at this point, there's just that needs assessment happening right now with that grant funds. We haven't got those needs pieces back, but Mr. Herman, because there is a capital piece as well.
Thank you, Worship. There's a couple irons in the fire with respect to childcare. Obviously, we're already running those programs. Some of the partners in that grant applica, the planning grant application are not. So we're not exactly in the same situation. But with respect to the school district, we've had some chats with them about what may or may not be happening at Willow's Elementary. And they came forward to us to see if there would be any interest at our end. So there's a couple irons in the fire, but we're, we're not at the point where we would know enough about what a project would be or how much it would cost to put it on, on the sheet. But it might be one of those projects that our CEO noted could come forward at a later date.
And I will just point out, as this is really an estimates-related discussion, that's part of it, those grants are 100% of all the capital funding, so they wouldn't be coming into our budgeting cycle.
But it doesn't affect staff.
Oh, absolutely affects staff, yes. All right. Anything else before we go? We'll come back, we'll come back to this table at the very end. Is there anything else, Ms. Vrelly, you wanted to touch on before we go up to the public for input?
Not at this time, Your Worship. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll have a few minutes here for people to come forward. Anybody who wishes to come forward to speak to council, please do come forward. I'll probably give the same sort of restrictions I gave to council. If we can keep it to five minutes or less, it would be greatly appreciated, because we do want to wrap this up for two o'clock and we want to give everybody a chance to speak.
Yes, I will keep it brief. First of all, a Bravo Zulu.
Can you just, can you just give your name?
My name is Mike Wilmot and I live in Oak Bay.
Thank you.
I'd like just, first of all, to give a Bravo Zulu, was very informative. I'd like to thank the staff and the council. I hope you can capture the essence of the meeting and get it on the web as soon as possible. I'd just like to talk for the third time about the low-cost item of looking at the Advisory Planning Commission, Parks, Rec and Culture, and the Heritage Commission. I think you need a common terms of reference where possible. There should be opportunities for all three, for public engagement, including written correspondence and speaking at the beginning of the meeting. There should be a checklist. I hope that when it, that something is done, it includes the, a counselor, staff and the community. I wouldn't want the staff to put together something and not capture something about how these commissions are working that the community knows about. So I urge you to set up a committee that consists of a counselor or one or two, staff and the community. It's only going to take, I could imagine, no more than two months. This will positively give the applicants feedback about some of the big projects they're talking about at an early stage, instead of waiting months and months and then getting this blowback. It will lower the temperature in the community. And if you're looking for a win, you're going to be spending a lot of money soon enough, this is an easy win to show the community you're serious about community engagement. And I think you will get a lot of pats on the back very soon. It's not a difficult thing to do. But please, don't have the staff come forward with something and then ask for the community for their input. Include some community members knowledgeable from some of these commissions at the beginning, and you can produce a document which will be very, very well received by the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Does anybody else who wishes to come forward?
Curtis Hobson, Oak Bay.
Welcome.
Been here for three hours, so I guess I, I've earned my spot at the microphone. I just wanted to thank everyone. This has been fantastic. I really appreciated Counselor Patterson's idea to separate out the core and the capital pieces and when that gets communicated to the public, because, you know, if it's all wrapped into one, we see the really, really big number. When it's separated out, I think that makes it a little more logical for the community. I don't, I mean, of course, I think I've said here before, I don't mind paying more tax if I know it's going towards something. I don't know if everyone feels the same way as me. But, you know, the last election was, a lot of it was about infrastructure and we know, and the community that was engaged and voted for you knew that this was coming. We haven't paid enough for a long time. I think we all know that. Managing the, the message, as Mr. Jones pointed out, is going to be important. But we also have to do, consider, you know, the demographic of our community and how are those increases going to affect some people who have been here a very, very long time, basically, you know, built our community and built our country. And really, what you're embarking on now is how is our community going to evolve? Like, what is it going to look like in 10, 15, 20 years? And, you know, that's an important part of the message that needs to get out to the public, because, you know, I've been here at council for a year or so and we've seen how reactive everything has been, ad hoc, seat-of-the-pants type of action. And that's where we are now. Like, and to communicate that message is, like, really, what we have now is what we've paid for. And if we want better, we might have to pay more. Of course, we want to look for efficiencies, and I've heard that word a few times around the table, so I think that's really important. We also know that the largest portion of most organizations is employee costs, and workload has been mentioned. But the message to the community, I think, has to be, you know, the separated of the core and the capital and what's important to the community. I know if any of you are on Oak Bay local, it's come up a few times, people have been pining for an outdoor pool at Carnarvon Park. And we know that's really expensive. And people, like, it, it's a common thing. People want, but don't want to pay, right? So I think we really are at that point where the message is, you know, what we want, we have to pay for. What we need, we have to pay for first, right? So the wants are luxuries, in my mind. And again, the the piece about the demographic of the community, a lot of people have been here for a long time. People think Oak Bay is unaffordable, but we know our rental stock is quite affordable in the CRD. And it's not an easy thing for you to do. So good luck. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hobson. I'm sure that's ominous sounding, good luck at the end of that, but that's okay. Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name's Rob Jack and I live at 2393 Todd Road, which, a property that borders Willow's School. I'd like to talk about the school district 61's proposed plan to build two more portables in the Musgrave Field for childcare spaces, which of course is a topic that was brought up here.
I might, I just, you're welcome to speak here briefly, but we are really speaking about our strategic priorities at this meeting. And and I do invite you as well to our our council meeting, where we have a public participation period, which is the appropriate place to talk. But I'll leave you the three minutes that we would give you at that table as well here.
But I, really, it's all about safety. I think the the proposed plan, and I think that that's an issue that the council should address, is that the the proposed plan is really a bad plan from the point of view of causing even more congestion in Musgrave and the safety of the kids going to and from school. The plan is to have cars pull in, in, off of Musgrave and back onto Musgrave during school hours, like, the busiest times of the day. And already, there's kids that are almost getting run over. I think if you talk to anybody at, in the, in the school or the parents, they'll tell you how, how many times that there's kids that are almost being run over in front of Willow's School. So I think that's a very important issue. And we're also losing more green space with this plan. Green space that's actually used by the community, by the Oak Bay community. And I think, you know, the the plan is to seal off another 30% of that field. And, you know, so it will not be used. That 30% will not be used by the community. And I just think it's a, it's a very poor plan. I'm not against childcare spaces, but it doesn't need to be in that spot. In fact, I think, you know, Carnarvon Park and other areas are probably a much more appropriate place for for those childcare spaces, because there is ample parking, because parking's a huge issue around Willow's School, as I'm sure the, the, the traffic control people here at the city know. Anyhow, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome.
Michael Yakubowicz. I live at 2390 Musgrave, and I ditto the last person's here being a neighbor there. The also, the aspect that is important for this meeting and planning is the fact that the school's at capacity. And we're going into a density time when kids will be increasing in the neighborhood just by your whole council's plan to up-densification. Where are those kids going to go? That's the question. Where are they going to go? It's crowded. Those kids need a place to go. And that's something that council and the school district, this is a private entity that's going into the school, by the way. I don't know about the legalities of a private business on school grounds. I'm sure there's presidents and people that know that information, my concern. The reason I'm also here is a thought about transparency is what came up about the council. I have my water bill here. It's $1,740.38. This year, I lost six of my huge cedar trees, my hedge, which will, I might have to take down my cedar hedge. And I'm just saying that I would like the council in in their deliberations to consider the green space of the area. My, I have two legal lots and it'd be wonderful to divide them up and, and have two wonderful houses and may make a profit. But this town, this place is my home and will be, I think, till I'm in a box in the backyard, which isn't allowed. But, you know, I'm paying, I'm paying almost as much for water that. When I asked what was my solutions, the garden, the gardens, people say, well, take everything out and put in less stuff. Stuff, we have 10 months of the year of water. It comes down, there's 50 inches, this much, on every square foot of land in the watershed. I think it's not transparent that, that this is how much I spend on water and this is how much I spend in the, in the summertime. And so when you're doing taxes, I'm paying, as everybody knows, on my water bill, I'm paying taxes that go into the green space, go into the, the green idea. Thank you so much for your time. I wish you'd consider these two items I brought before you.
Thank you, Mr. Yakubowicz. Welcome to the table. Yeah, just name and, name and municipality, please.
Kathleen Matthews, 1180 St. Louis Street. I really, I'm sorry I came late. I wanted to listen to Andrew Weaver talk at the AGM for the Green Party AGM meeting. But this has been really interesting. And, and I really echo, I really appreciate, this word transparency is is important. And, and I realize as what's happening here is we're talking about new initiatives and new budget initiatives and the costing of that. And just seeing that level of granularity is kind of, okay, this is what you guys are dealing with all the time. And I really appreciate that as a member of the public. So thank you for organizing this. But in preparation for your budget meeting, which I don't know if I've ever attended before, I now want to know what else is in the budget already? Like, how much does it cost for snow removal? How much does it cost for having those people come at 7:30 in the morning outside my window and trim that hedge at Windsor Park? And, and I, I, I hope that you're, I mean, maybe it's already available, but as a member coming now, having seen this level of granularity, I want to see the whole budget. I want to see the existing stuff at that level of granularity. And I want you to ask the question, let us ask the question, what's in there that we don't need? What's in there that we can make more efficient? And why are we spending so much with all this non-green equipment to maintain our sports fields, so the grass is that high, when it probably could be okay to be that high and not have to be, you know, there's a lot of questions. And I think if we're going to really pay attention to transparency, I want to know what else. I want to know the entire budget. I don't know if that's doable, how you would present it, but I think you can't, do you do that at every budget meeting? Do you already present all that retrospective detail? Because this is, this is the kind of stuff I think we want to know, or I want to know all of a sudden.
You may, you may regret asking that question.
I know. Is it this thick? I know. Is it this thick? But I would zero in maybe just on one, the part I'm interested, like the parks, you know? But how much do you already pay for not fixing the park potholes because you're sued because some bike trips into it, you know? I don't know. There's legal fees too.
We, we don't have a not breaking potholes fund specifically in the budget.
Yeah, well, I broke a tooth because of one up and up and so.
But I, uh, but I just, no, just for, it's a good question. And actually, so in the estimates process, we have traditionally published the, the estimates binder on, as part of our agenda package. Uh, it is very dense, uh, and it's hard to make much sense of in the sense that you're looking at, you know? I don't know how many, a few thousands of line items. And Ms. Varela, did you have anything else to add to that? Oh, pieces on there, our time.
I'm going to ask this question again at the budget meeting if I come, but you know, like, is there a way you can make some of this available to us at this kind of level of?
Right, so there's, there's a couple of, uh, yeah, so the, there's a, we have a few input things in terms of opinions. So there's a citizen budget and you can go through and look at that. But the, the details of the actual budget come as part of our estimates package. And that's the, uh, that, so if you want to look through it at that time, you can do that. You can go back and look at previous years as well. I think we're trying to work towards a model that we give a little bit better year over year reporting. So we have that kind of context for, not maybe the line items, but the, the broader pieces of it.
But in time for the public meeting, because your estimates comes after all the public.
No, the detailed budget won't be at that. So the citizen budget piece, which is really an input piece and the, uh, and previous budgets would be the only place really to go. Well, we'll collect as much information as we can to make sure that we're, we're capturing these large items. But that level of detail, I don't believe will be available at that. It's just.
But I think preparing us for this meeting and, I mean, but, but I also would urge you to try to, I mean, your website isn't the easiest to navigate. But I think making use of the Oak Bay News and trying to present that information in the Oak Bay News, like, and I couldn't, I tried to, I found out about this meeting through Oak Bay Watch. I don't read your, I'm not, you know, reading your website all the time. And then when I did phone to see if there was, if it was happening, if I could come, there's nobody who's able to answer the phone or even have a message saying, hey, if you're coming, yeah, it's open to the public, you know? So trying to figure out ways, but I, I think if there's, in preparation for this budget meeting, if you do an awful lot more using the Oak Bay News and if you can put some stuff in, where can I go if I want a little bit, know more information about? Okay, I don't want to go through three thousand pages, but maybe I do, you know, like, I'm not totally nuts yet, but, you know? So it's just, I think in preparation for that, because you've started this transparency process, which I really applaud all of you for, for this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. There's some good feedback. Appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Just leads to more questions.
It does, I know. That's, that's, you give information, people have more questions. That's reality. Uh, are there any other, anybody else who wishes to come forward at this time? All right, I'll see it. So we have about seven minutes left. We're going to back to this table. I know. Well, let's, let's do new initiatives on Monday. I think that's just, uh, I think I need a little bit of breathing time to, to, to talk. Uh, is there anything else that people want to, uh, have any questions of that you sort of sat here listening or, and have another idea or question? Oh, Ms. Matthews, you're more than welcome to come back.
I, I'm seeing that we have all these new initiatives from here and I'm seeing, oh, we're going to have some new initiatives for you. What about if I have a new initiative? Where do I bring that up?
Excellent question that is.
Maybe I should know the answer. I don't know.
The easiest one is probably to, to bring it to a councillor so we can have it at the table on Monday. That's us, and we'll have it.
There wouldn't be an opportunity at this budget meeting, because all of a sudden this idea of initiatives, I'm going to come to a budget meeting and come, oh, oh, hey, well, what about this? This is a new, is there any kind of an opportunity for that, that to be part of this process?
I'm, I may just leave that and answer it later, but I'll, unless Ms. Varela has a, has a, has a specific answer at this point. We're trying to incorporate some of that, this feedback into our, into our ideas and, and budget, but Ms. Varela?
Thank you, your worship. I think it's just important to know, uh, as we've been talking all the way through this, this won't be the ideal. This budget process is in stream. Uh, we've made great strides, uh, and we know this is one of five meetings that we've had for strategic planning, uh, now to date. And, and the discussion about linking service levels to budget is a really important one for the public. And I think that's what we have to strive for in twenty twenty. You're not going to see, uh, the, the fulsome presentation of that at the open house. And again, when we look up to the slide to talk about moving forward, uh, for next year, we'd actually like to foster that enhanced way for the public to become involved. It's an improvement this year, but we're not going to be where we want to be. And I think that's part of going forward is you're actually going to, uh, see a plan, uh, and a well-publicized, uh, series of opportunities for the public to weigh in. So again, a step in the right direction. We're not all the way there.
And, and a good point that this is, we're well on our way on this particular budget cycle to, to piece there. Yeah, thank you for that. Is there anything else from this table? Councillor Green?
Um, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Jones, would you like a copy of my, my minutes of this meeting, my, my own recording? Would that help or I've, I've done a, I've made notes throughout the, throughout the meeting. Would that be helpful to staff?
Your worship, we, we are taking, uh, notes, but if you wanted to leave this, uh, those with us, absolutely, we can have a look at them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we're largely wrapping up here. I said at end time how you often get to it. Thank you very much, everybody, for staff and everything else for, for bringing this forward. I, I would ask, you know, for, I guess fairly brutal honesty from, from all sides on this, particularly from staff as we go forward and have new initiatives and have other considerations. Uh, I think we can all recognize there's a sort of three-way triangle. You can do things fast, you can do it cheap and you can do it well, and you can't, you can do two of those three, we can never do all three. And so if we're going to come back and ask for more parts of this, that there's, we, we have to recognize there's going to be costs to that or it'll have to delay some other pieces or there's going to be aspects to that. So, um, it's easy, it's hard sometimes in these meetings to say no. But our, our expectation of staff, and I think we, we seem to have that other consensus that didn't quite make it up on that screen, was we really want to finish things this term. We want to, we want to be able to at the end of this say, yeah, we've done this, we've actually achieved this, we've, we've hit those goals. And, and we just want to make sure we're not sort of stretching ourselves within that we get ninety percent of the way done through ten items instead of finishing seven. So that's just the other ask I would make at the end of this piece is that we have that pretty blunt conversation as we're going forward. And, uh, yeah, I look forward to the conversation on Monday where we get to talk about some of the other ideas that people have. I don't, please don't bring a hundred each, that would be too much. But if there's some key priorities that you think would fit into this, that would be, that'd be fantastic. And I want to thank the public as well for coming out on a Saturday and spending a lot of time with us. So, uh, in the freezing cold, yes. Anything else before I go? Ms. Varela?
Thank you, your worship. So I just, again, wanted to thank, uh, mayor and council and staff, uh, for pulling this off today and for the gallery attending. I will note that I am signing off after today and I'm excited to be stepping into the permanent role of chief administrative officer on April eighth, when I'm back. I know you're in good hands with this staff team between, uh, now and then. So again, just a really big, uh, kudos to staff for pulling this off and, and, uh, carrying the process through over the next month.
And I would, I would echo that as well. I really appreciate that. And we, we, we wish you all the well, best in your, in your break and, uh, look forward to working with you permanently when you return. So thank you very much for all that you've done, Ms. Varela. This has been really, the, the impact you've made here has been fantastic. And I know it's the team, but it's, it's also your leadership. So thank you for that. All right, with that, oh, Mr. Jones?
Your worship, following up on Ms. Varela's, she, she will, she will not be here. So I just want to make sure on Monday that, uh, staff are going to be responding to what you, your expectations are. So what I hear is that we are going to come to a meeting, uh, uh, to listen to you and provide some feedback to ideas that you have and, uh, really not to go over these things that we've talked about today. So this is new ideas and our ability to respond to those new ideas.
That is my intention. Uh, councillor Zelka, did you have something else?
Because there was lack of time in this opportunity to respond to a number of the questions put forward, some, I, some myself. I was hoping that, uh, we would get some of the answers, uh, on Monday, uh, from, regarding, relating to some of the questions asked today that, that we're not responding to. That's what I was hoping for. Maybe, you know, at the, maybe at the beginning of the meeting or at the end, but certainly a separate from the new initiatives coming from us.
Mr. Jones, I, I'm thinking that's probably about a half hour's worth of, of response time, but it requires staff to be here. Is that possible or is that a?
Your, your worship, we've tried to, uh, capture the questions. We tried to respond to some today. But if, uh, if council has some very specific things, councillor Zelka, if there's ones we didn't respond to, if you could email them to me and if other councillors have those, then, uh, we will either respond via email or be prepared on Monday to, uh, respond as best we can.
That's, that's great. Thank you very much. And yeah, my, my expectation, just so we're all on the same page, uh, on Monday for this meeting is that, uh, you know, if any members of council, you don't have to, but if there's something that you would, you think, well, this is really something else missing here that we, we should be able to, to tackle, it'll come to this body. We'll, we'll discuss it. Um, we may have votes on those. We may just say, yes, that's worth, we, we agree, there's, there's majority agreement that that's, that's worth looking at certainly. And then if that's a yes, then that would go away and the, and the council, councillor would then be required to go and fill in one of those sheets with the information. They'd work with staff to kind of, and that would come back to us as one of the initiatives that would be included in the, uh, as, as an addendum to the budgeting process, that we would consider those as part of that budget process. That's my read of our process here. We're, we're getting nods, so I'm.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page then if that's the will.
Okay, good. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Move second, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed. Twelve seconds over, not too bad.